Good evening, everyone. It is 5:00 PM in the Fisher Building. I call this special meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board to order. It is 5:00 PM on Friday, February 19th, 2021. I am in Conference Room C of the Fisher Building, 12121 West North Avenue, with board members participating in person and remotely via the video conferencing platform Zoom due to active health and safety concerns associated with the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency. The purpose of this meeting is to vote on the recommendation to start five days a week in-person learning for grades six through 12, Phase Into Learning on March 2nd, instead of the previously approved April 5th, 2021. I'll start with a moment of silent reflection. Mr. Domon.
Here.
Ms. Fraley.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Ms. Muftal.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Rolland.
Here.
Dr. Joseph Angers here. Ellie Katie.
Here.
See if there's any other student members here. Aiden Jones. Mira Gajra.
Here.
I think that's everyone. It's good to see you all tonight. We are here tonight to take up a single item, a superintendent action item. And I've gotten, I wanted to start with, I've gotten a lot of questions of why this has come up now, and I wanted to answer that before we begin. There is, over the last several weeks, my perception of rising increase in the number of concerns and issues related to student engagement, health and well-being, mental health issues. And we've also seen a dramatic decrease, an ongoing decrease in the COVID environment in terms of cases, positivity rates. And so I felt that it was necessary to call an additional board meeting to consider Dr. Erdl's new recommendation and to call the board together for this consideration. With that in place, Ms. Muftal, can you read the recommendation? Sorry, Ms. Fraley.
It is recommended that students in grades six through 12, Phase Into Learning, start five days a week of in-person instruction beginning March 2nd, 2021, instead of the previously approved April 5th, 2021. March 1st would be a prep date for staff and no school for students in grades six through 12. The superintendent, in consultation with the Medical Public Health Advisory Committee, is authorized to shift to exclusively virtual instruction because of worsening metrics in Wauwatosa. Approval of the school board is not required for shift to virtual instruction, and I so move.
May I have a second for this motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Muftal. The plan for this evening is for there to be a presentation by Dr. Erdl and the team, an opportunity for board discussion and Q and A, 30 minutes for public comment, and then we'll return to any board comments, questions, final Q and A. And then we'll reread the motion, vote, and see where things go from there. Dr. Erdl?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the board for meeting on a Friday at 5:00 PM. I don't know that we've had a Friday board meeting, and thank you to the administration, everybody else that is joining us. I want to further explain why Friday. We were looking, trying to get a meeting set up on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday was the first time that I knew we could have all seven board members present, so that is why we are meeting on Friday. Why not wait till Monday? If the board does approve this, I want to make sure there's, if it's two additional days or three additional days for teachers to plan and everybody else to prepare for that change, that is why my recommendation was do it as soon as possible and do it today. So the question is, why now? Why are we back here with a recommendation to have our kids, our secondary students back starting March 2nd? And Dr. Joseph Angers touched on a couple of areas, but for reasons, the external metrics have dropped significantly. Our internal metrics are as good as they've been all school year. Elementary, we've been successful, and I'll talk a little bit about what I mean by success a little bit later. And our student struggles. We continue to have students that struggle, whether it's academic, social, emotional. I've received a good number of emails in the past couple of weeks from parents, as well as had discussions about some of the struggles our students are having. What I'm not going to try to do is go over the entire presentation that was done in January. There was a lot of information that was shared. I don't think there's a reason to really kind of rehash all of those components. What I want to try to do is touch on what I just mentioned, the things that are different. I also want to point out that I clearly recognize that there is not 100%, maybe not 50% of the people that are staff that support going back right now. And I take that into consideration when I bring this forward. I put a high premium on face-to-face instruction, and if it's one day, or nine days, or 10 and 11 days like it is in this case, additional instructional days, I think it's worth doing. That I know also at the last meeting, a number of board members have said we want to vote, and we don't want to have this come back again and cause problems and raise the issue again. And I take that into consideration when I come forward with this recommendation as well. So in other words, I don't take this recommendation lightly. It really is about getting our students back into school as soon as possible. I go back to last fall as well. So I take all of those components and where the board voted and said this is what we're doing. Back last fall, when it's, your job is to get our kids back, five days a week, as soon as it's safe. And so I've battled those two components since the last meeting, and that's another reason why we're here as well, because I do believe it's safe. One of the, one of the areas people I think are looking for is some normalcy and some consistency. So I think it's also important to point out, whether it's March 2nd, or April 5th, or 6th, going back, we can't expect consistency through the remainder of the year. I think it's important to understand that there's a possibility we go back five days a week, or if we're still in hybrid, that we could end up, and there's a surge, and we end up going virtual again. And that switch to virtual is not made through a board meeting and public comment and discussion. That's made by, the metrics go up and we go to virtual. So as much as we all want to look for that and try to provide some consistency and normalcy, it's, I just don't see that happening this year. And the other, the other area I look at too, and I think has been important all along, is we've made decisions all along based on data and science. And our experience this year is considered science as well, and our experience that we've learned and the research that's happened during this year, whether it's in our district or in other places as well. But really want to make sure that we're making those decisions on science and data. So when I discuss internal metrics, in this chart, you can see several points throughout the year related to our internal data. And you can see on, as of today, we have zero staff cases. And that, that includes our elementary staff and students back five days a week since January. We have less than five student cases. We have five staff in quarantine, and those are all from outside of the school district. Nothing was from inside the school district. And we have eight students in quarantine as well. If you look at the peak of, these other dates are decision-making points that whether it was around the time we voted to have, the board voted to have the elementary come back, or it was the time when we voted to, the board voted to have hybrid start. But the peak on 11/16, I don't, it's not the peak for all of those areas. There's different days where some of those numbers were a little bit higher, but cumulatively, that's the highest day that we had, November 16. And then our external metrics. And this, this is our scorecard that we used, we've been using since the beginning of the year. And our numbers right now are lower than they've ever been throughout the school year. So at our peak on cases, 11/16, we had 1,338. That's again, the same day, November 16th, we actually had a caseload of 1,460 on a different day, right around the same time. But this is the day that cumulatively, all the areas were the highest, and our score on the bottom was the highest. December 21st, when the decision was made to bring elementary back, you can see that we were at 820 for caseload. Overall, the score was, the score from our metrics, metric scorecard was four. Currently, we're at two, we're at caseload of 135, and that's continuing to decrease. We weren't able to get numbers from today because they haven't been updated yet. So this is as of yesterday. Testing the positive percent, 2.39. Hospital capacity, 5.4, and it's decreasing. So you can see, you can understand what drove me to have this recommendation, that our internal and external metrics, again, are as good as they've been. So the CDC came out with additional guidelines recently, last week, I believe it was, or early this week. And what they did is use a different scorecard. And there was a lot of discussion with our medical advisory committee several weeks ago, but whether or not they should change to align with CDC. And that was prior to this release. And they had decided, after going back and forth, to leave it where it was at, where the standard was 200. But if we look at the CDC scorecard, the new scorecard, and I know the information that I sent out, we were in the orange for caseload. This is dropped as of yesterday, and it's continuing to drop, the seven-day caseload of 45.8, which puts us in the moderate, moderate area for caseload. And for positive tests, we're in blue. So what does that mean as far as CDC guidelines? I think the big change, at least in those guidelines, and again, they're recommended guidelines. If you're in orange or red, they, the language, I believe, is you must maintain six feet of distance between people in the schools. When you hit yellow, it's to the best, to the greatest extent possible. So six feet are to the greatest extent possible. So whether we not, and this is where we're at, there could be again, another spike that pops up and we go into, into orange or red. But ultimately, I guess I'd look at it, and our practices that we've had in place align with what CDC has been recommending, they're recommending now, and have been recommending pretty much all year, and I'll touch on those a little bit later. But as we go through and look at, do we have six feet between all of our students and all of our staff right now? Absolutely not. Are we going to be doing that when we go with all of our students in school? No. We're going to do it, it's not all the time. Because the whole issue when we have a quarantine is that students and staff are not six feet apart. So that, that's kind of just the nature of what a quarantine is, because they're not able to maintain that, that distance. And again, it's recommendations. When we look at it, it is to make sure, we want to make sure that we have all the adults in the building six feet away from students and from other adults. And I think we have that aligned. And then the other classes, that has not been possible. And again, I'll touch on that in a little bit. So some of the success, I think it's important to take a look at the elementary instruction. So first semester, or first, the fall through winter, in other words, September 1st through December 22nd, we had 28 possible days of in-person instruction for our elementary students. From the time we came back five days a week, January 6th to today, we've had 29 possible days. So you can see the number of days that we're able to pick up in a short period of time. And I go back to the point that I place a high premium on every single face-to-face instructional day that we can have. And that's not to discount what's been going on in hybrid, or concurrent, or asynchronous learning. I think those have been good experiences for our students, but it's just not the same. One of the other, I mentioned it a little bit earlier, Cohort A in this proposal does add 10 additional days of face-to-face instruction, and Cohort B will get 11 additional days of face-to-face instruction if this recommendation is approved. So just some statistics on the COVID environment at the elementary level. Out of the 28 positive cases among elementary students, and there was 28 positive for staff members since January 6th. Seven students and four staff were contagious while at school. Of those 11 cases that were contagious, 114 students and 14 staff had to quarantine. One of the quarantined students became positive, and none of the quarantined staff became positive. So when we talk about mitigation efforts in our quarantining and contact tracing, that's an example of how that is effective, because none of them did become positive. So there's a number of concerns that have been brought up. They were brought up previously at the board meeting, the previous board meeting, as well as more recently. And I just want to try to address some of the issues that were raised. School plans that we have for going back five days a week were not fully developed, and we feel like at this point, they're well-developed. Our principals and buildings and grounds have put a lot of time into making sure that we're ready to go, starting tomorrow, if we had to. I don't know if tomorrow's a day where we could actually go, but I mean, that was kind of the stance we took as far as getting ready. So there was furniture being moved, and we wanted to make sure that if a decision was made at some point in time, we're ready to go. That includes all the social, emotional support that'll be provided to students as the students come back. We also had a substitute teacher shortage that's been remedied. HR has done an excellent job. We have, our, we've ramped up, ramped up our substitute teaching pool to, to make sure we've reduced our unfilled positions. And I know another thing, we've talked about remaining flexible and adaptable during this time. And we're trying, we're trying to remain that way with the plans as well. So we have plans as far as going back into school, and I know there's going to be, we have them spaced. And our principals, and Mr. Hughes is going to talk a little bit about, a little bit later, about what it, what it looks like for a student to come back on, at East High School, for example. So I know I shared the school plans, they are on board docs as well, of what each school, each secondary school is prepared and what they have in place to bring our students back. Another concern that was raised, our staff are hesitant to return five days before being vaccinated. You know, for some of our staff, the anxiety's real. And it's just the fact their concern, you know, I don't want to discount that. It's, it's been really difficult to have the conversations and the Zoom with our staff that I had and hear the concerns, and I think they're real concerns from our staff. And it's, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to do that. It's hard to, to listen to the concerns. And I know they feel like they're not being heard because this recommendation is coming forward, and that's not what they agree with. But I also know that it is, it's safe for our staff. Our data tells us it's safe for our staff. The data tells us, and our experience tells us, it's safe for our students as well. But as far as being vaccinated, we've done everything we can to try to get ourselves in a place where our staff can get vaccinated. Currently, we have about 20, 21% of our staff have been notified that they're eligible and have, it's been underway. We've got a number, 40, I believe, of our staff have both shots. So we've got about 20%. Those are all the people that have been eligible. March 1st, the rest of our staff will be eligible. The CDC guidelines that came out also talks about vaccination as being, that it may be a mitigation strategy, but it shouldn't be a precursor to bringing students back into school. Again, it's a CDC guideline. It doesn't change our approach to making sure that we get all of our staff the opportunity to be vaccinated as soon as possible. I have contacted Representative Vining, Senator Cuyenga, and had conversations. And I know they're working on our behalf to have that happen. Senator Cuyenga spoke up on the Senate floor. I believe there's a bill to, it seems kind of strange that there's a bill to put educators ahead of prisoners, but the current, the current, the current procedures do have prisoners in front of, in front of educators. So I appreciate the efforts of, of all of our representative folks, but hopefully they push a little bit harder and a little bit further, and anybody that's listening would, wouldn't, could make a call to them, or we would appreciate it. And the other, the other point is there's too much change. I think I'd mentioned that a little bit earlier, and talked about it a little bit earlier, that as much as we look at this change, I don't think we're in a position where we can say that we want to stop change. I don't think we can shift to that mindset, where we're going to say, this is the way it's going to be the rest of the year. It's a virus, we don't know how it operates. We, we can go on trends, and the trends that we see right now look really good. The other time, we tried to guess how it was going to operate, we thought it was going to really explode after Thanksgiving. That didn't necessarily occur. So, so I don't want to rely on not changing as a, as a strategy or a reason to go forward with, not go forward with this recommendation. I look at this change also as a little bit different than, for example, a blocked schedule change. There's change management that goes into this. This is more of an emergency declaration to say, we've got to make this change. I try to shift myself back, and I don't want what we're doing to become normal. I don't want hybrid to become normal. I don't want concurrent to become normal. I want to keep reminding myself that five days a week with our students in school is what normal is, and we've got to chase it everywhere we can, in a safe manner. And that's been, been my approach. I don't know that that helps anybody with change. I'm a little bit different. Everybody's different in how they adapt to different, to the changes we've had. I know people are weary of it. I know parents, I know students and staff are. And again, I take that into consideration with this recommendation. And I just think it's that critically important to have our students back into school. So what has changed since January 25th, and some of these I've mentioned? Internal and external metrics continue to improve. I asked for feedback from my student superintendent advisory committee. And out of the students on my committee that are in Phase Into Learning, 76% of them said they would prefer going back five days a week at this point. They gave some really good feedback. So what's going well right now in concurrent? They get to see their friends, whether it's in person or online. Teachers are getting better with Canvas. Some are really good with concurrent. One answered nothing. What's not going well, and these are, it's not what I expected, but it's, it's rather troubling. What's not going well is Zoom, Wi-Fi, noise at home. It speaks to a lot of the challenges we've talked about with, with, with virtual learning and at-home learning. So mental health was probably the most spoken about thing by those students. The mental health concern, whether it was the students that did not want to go back five days a week that are on that committee, they spoke about their mental health. But it was an issue, the amount of homework. Other, just, there was another category. They liked the new hallway configurations. async is better than concurrent. They liked their Wednesdays and get their work done. So that was the feedback I had from them. Our school plans, we made sure that our plans are, are ready to go for lunch, passing time, classrooms, music, PE, mask protocol, entry and exit. Like I said, those have been shared with the board. We do have representatives from our secondary schools, our administration, either here or online, to answer questions if there are questions. When I mentioned the other, the other piece of what science is, and I look at it, and the experience that we've had and experience other schools have had. I've been meeting weekly with a group of about 12 superintendents from southeastern Wisconsin. And every district's a little bit different, right? I mean, we, we all kind of get into our own thing, and we focus on what's going for us. It's Wauwatosa. And that's really what I'm concerned about, our Wauwatosa staff, our Wauwatosa students, and our families in Wauwatosa. I like to think we're a little bit better than every other, other place. But I've learned to collaborate pretty well with this group, meeting them that often. But a number of those districts have been going five days a week all year. Several, two, I believe, have been going all year. And there's been a lot of lessons we've learned. And that's taken into consideration in the development of our, our plans that we have and how we look at contact tracing. For example, our contact tracing, I don't know that there's anybody that can say they, they contact trace every single case in 24 hours. We've been able to do that. I believe we had one case that was at 48 hours prior to our winter break. But, so there's a lot going on. And there's a number of districts around us that either have moved recently or are moving. I believe most of them have moved to five days a week. Some of them are block scheduling. Elmbrook has block scheduling. MEK One has been all year. They do two classes a day. So there's some different configurations, but a majority of them are, they're traditional schedule like we have. So our plans address, obviously, our schedule and our students. So under the CDC guidelines, and again, most of these have been in place with the prior guidelines, but the new guidelines talk about a number of these areas. The masks, we have masks that, we have N95 masks for all staff if they want them. We've seen a little uptick in staff that have been coming over to Fisher to get fitted for them and get their N95 masks. We also have surgical masks for any staff that want them. I know a number of staff have talked about double masking, and we can accommodate that as well. We also have given Plexiglas and have more Plexiglas for staff to keep themselves separated from students in areas within the classroom. And we will make sure that every single staff member needs, have, have what they need related to, to all of those areas. Distancing I mentioned, and our, our standard, the key piece, when you look at our data and you look at our transmission and our caseloads, is through the adults. And to me, we've been able to set up our elementary, and we have it set up for secondary teachers to be six feet away from each other and six feet away from students. Just, I know some of our elementary staff have actually put tape down on the floor to keep a safe space, to make sure the kids, the kids stay away and stay out of that area. And teaching has changed. I mean, teaching in, in the classroom has changed. It's not a situation where you're spending a lot of time over the shoulder of a student, helping them with that work. It's, it's a different method and a different approach. And I think that's hard for a lot of our teachers that really like hands-on teaching. And I understand that's, that's been a challenge all year and will continue to be a challenge as our, our students go back five days a week as well. Hand hygiene, we continue, continue with hand hygiene. We have hand washing stations, new ones that have been put in, and a lot of cleaner that's all over the place for, for hand hygiene. But really, our, our teachers have done a tremendous job with our students, making sure that that's, that's a priority. Respiratory etiquette, making sure that our students are following that. Our cleaning protocols will continue. We've, we've done our, the question about Wednesdays, like if we're going five days a week, and so the deep clean on Wednesday will not happen. If you remember, the reasons that we had the Wednesday deep clean is because to, to separate the cohorts and make sure we weren't cross-contaminating on Wednesdays, because that was the break day between the two cohorts. With all of our students back together, we will continue that emphasis on, on cleaning throughout the day. I know we have additional cleaning staff that have been in the buildings cleaning, and we'll continue to do it. So our secondary schools will be under the same cleaning schedule as our elementary schools. I mentioned contact tracing, isolation, our air exchange. We are four to six air exchanges per hour in all of our buildings. And that even increases, we have buildings that they do sense increased occupancy, and the airflow continues to improve. I know board members received some concerns about one of our, one of the classrooms, and that is an area that's being addressed. So we do have our new HVAC systems that have been installed in our buildings. They take tuning and to make sure all of, all of the rooms and there's equal inflow, outflow of all the air. So that's, that's going to be something we're continuing to, to work on. But I think there's only one situation, and we have a temporary solution in there right now as well. I mentioned PPE availability in our vaccination clinics that we do have set up for our staff coming forward. And those dates are March 12th and April 16th. I'm hopeful that, I know I've asked the question, and I'm hopeful that there is a possibility that we can get those moved up earlier. I guess we, we keep learning from what's on the news and seeing different, different quotes that come out. And apparently, there's another, Dane County has contracted with somebody to vaccinate their teachers March 4th, I believe it was. So we're going to do everything we can to focus on March 12th and April and make sure that we, we can, I don't know that we have any control over how many doses our health department's going to get, but we're going to continue to look for other ways as well and offer opportunities as they come up to make sure our staff can get those. I do want to touch on joint, the Joint Finance Committee. There's, there's an issue, and the timing of it kind of doesn't fit well with the narrative. And there's a belief that this recommendation is being done because of money. And I'll just say that if I were to recommend and the board were to take action based on the knowledge of what we know about the funding in the Joint the knowledge of what we know about the funding in the joint finance action, I think it would be just as bad as it is ludicrous that the joint finance actually voted on something. They have absolutely no clue on how that money is going to be distributed. They have no clue on the formula for it. They took, it's beyond me how they can take that many millions of dollars and make decisions that they don't know how it's going to be distributed and vote yes. Each member that voted yes for that, not one, I can guarantee not one of them knows what districts in their district are going to get because nobody in the state of Wisconsin knows how that money is being distributed yet. So it's $1.4 million that we were set to get additional above the 1.3 that was based on Title I formula, so $2.7 million. 1.3 we're going to get for sure. We're going to get some of that 1.4. It is going to be based on hours and days. But again, I'm going to go back and really emphasize the point. I don't think the board should make a decision based solely on that amount of money. We're going to get a good chunk of that 1.4 million, I believe. Again, my belief isn't based on knowledge of any formula, but if we're trying to figure out how that is going to be distributed through 174 school districts, I can't imagine that the impact is going to be that great. It still has to be distributed to 174 districts. So I just wanted to touch on that and make that point clear. I don't know that there's any change, any possible way to get joint finance to change that. I know people have contacted them, but Senator Coyenga is on joint finance. He was not there for that vote, but it would be good if they would change back to distribute that money in a more reasonable manner. This is the one slide that I pulled from our last presentation because I do just want to touch on what is it, what am I recommending and what does it look like? We're going to combine cohorts A and B. TC students will continue virtual sessions with current teachers using Zoom, cameras in Canvas. Phase into learning students will attend class in person five days a week. They're going to follow the, all students will, well, phase into learning and those connected students will follow the normal daily schedule, which is a six or seven period day. We do have some students that will be working concurrently with our phase into learning students, but that's only a handful of cases where there was not an opportunity to run a special TOSE connected class. And then Wauwatosha Virtual Academy students will continue with the Pearson LMS as well. At this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Hughes, if you can just kind of, just give a snapshot of some of the changes and what it'll look like for students and staff at East High School?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Earl. You know, as I was thinking about what-
You gotta hit that.
Is that better?
Yep.
There we go. Thank you. As I was thinking about your question to me earlier this week, the day in the life of a student. The hybrid concurrent model has really provided us the most important thing for students, which are the routines. The routines of coming into the building, what the hallways are, the entry in the morning. Students know where their rooms are, they know where their lockers are, how they can utilize them. So the biggest change, coming back five day full in person, will be the number of students that are around them. And the group that I think we will need to work the most with are incoming ninth graders, our current ninth graders, because they will not have been in a building with 1,000 people in a high school experience. Our sophomores, juniors and seniors will have memories of 1,000 people in the building. In terms of new things, obviously, we've laid out the hallway patterns, we've laid out the lunch patterns, the different stations that we are using, the alakart, that is not the primary place to get food now. The classes and passages are known, the routes to their classes are known. New to our students will be the Wednesday bell schedule, a shorter day with release time at 2:10, matching up and also bringing advisory, that longer advisory period to students where we are going to work around some SEL, around some Zello work, as well as helping to support students in the transition, all students, because whether you're ninth grade or 12th grade, coming back is something that we have to support. We talked a little bit about lunch. We eat in places that we never thought we would allow students to eat, whether it's hallways, stairwells, the learning center, extended areas, the gym, the gym seats. But students know all that already. They have been there before that. They will see eight to 10 supervisors around at lunch, reminding them to clean up after themselves, to wear their masks, to be socially responsible, whatever lunch supervisors have always done. Students will be spaced at tables. There will not be 12 students to a table, as I vividly remember from previous years. Everybody wants to sit on a six-foot bench. We'll continue to have them spaced as we have right now. When the weather gets better, we'll allow students to go outside and eat, utilize the courtyard or the areas of the North Field and other areas that we can just designate as good places to eat. After school, you'll still be able to see your teachers by appointment, participate in activities that are allowable, but we will maintain that quick dismissal if you do not have a school-sponsored activity or reason to be there. So, you know, teachers will be in the hallways, outside their doors greeting kids, which they do right now. Students will have access to their school counselors, stop in, drop in, make appointments, utilize email to do that, get their technology supported through the library media services, and have the office staff as well, the associate principals, principals, resource officers, administrative assistants there to help support. So the biggest thing for me is the crowd, the number of students that are going to be there at one time. And, you know, that's, if we haven't been around a crowd of people and many of us haven't, that is a learning piece for all of us, I think, is that comfort in a crowd and understanding that you can be safe and there are things that you can do to maintain your safety.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. And what Mr. Hughes just shared is similar at all four of the secondary schools. And like I mentioned, there are specific questions that the board has, they are here. Also, we have Caitlin, our school nurse is online with us and is available to ask questions. We also have from our medical advisory committee, Dr. Nolan, Dr. Richard and Dr. Grove, who are all here, able to answer questions as well. So, again, I go back to this recommendation is to start May, March 2nd, with our staff having March 1st to work through any plans that they might need to, to prepare it for the March 2nd opening.
The plan for, kind of right now, is to go through board members, any comments or questions, and to kind of see where we're at with things. I'm going to ask, Ms. Befeld, do you want to begin with anything you've got?
Oh, yes. Actually, could we hear from the middle school? And I know that was a bit, the comment from middle school folks was a bit missing from our last meeting. And so I, we have received quite a bit now since then, and I appreciate all of that feedback, but it'd be good if you could update us with the status.
Yeah. Anything specifically that Mr. Hughes touched on?
Anything specifically you'd like us to update you on? Because everything Mr. Hughes spoke to is pretty much right in line with what we're looking at.
Okay. So tell me a little bit more about, you know, space utilization and I mean, it's likely a bit easier for the sixth graders because they have the homeroom model.
The house model? Yes. What we got to do is we got a little bit more creative with our spacing. What's going to happen is we looked at some of, we polled our teachers who are concerned with some of their larger class sizes, anywhere north of 26 kids. We thought we had to explore some different avenues. So what we're going to do is we looked at those courses, we looked at available spaces around that area, proximity, and teachers that might have prep hours during that time, we might use alternative spaces or additional spaces. So for instance, we might have a class go in the cafe as a whole class. We might have a class go in the little theater, for instance. Or if those aren't available, we might have classes actually split up. And it means that we might have seven or eight kids that go into a classroom adjacent from it or next to it and use high flex learning. So they'll have supervision in both classrooms, but that way the teacher will be able to go back and forth. One of the bigger concerns, and I know that I communicated before, was our STEM program. We have that north hallway, which is kind of our STEM slash engineering hallway. They also have two additional workrooms, an atrium, genius bars, so they can get creative with how they space out their kids. We made sure that we're going to go through that as well. So there are a lot of options that we have available. Other teachers are pretty comfortable with the spacing in their classrooms. As soon as Mr. Nucci got all the furniture and in a pretty quick, pretty timely way, they were able to kind of adjust, move things around. We have modular furniture too that we're utilizing, flexible seating just to give kids the space. And we did include a bunch of breakout spaces over the last couple of years that we can utilize, like little nooks and alcoves at the school. So we did uptick our supervision, if you will, so having kids working in the hallway isn't going to be a safety issue by any means, so.
Oh, thank you. And how many lunch periods will you have?
We still have three lunch periods, but what we're going to end up doing is half the kids, for instance, in sixth grade, half the kids will go directly to recess, whether it be in the rec room or outside. Well, the first, the other half goes directly to the lunchroom. And then what we'll end up doing is rotating them. So we'll have 15 minutes of recess time and 15 minutes of lunch. Then as the weather permits, we're getting more picnic tables, so some of those kids can go directly outside and have lunch outside if they choose. So we'll be rotating and, again, maximizing the space that we have.
So essentially, six lunch periods?
Well, yeah, six lunch periods. So six 15-minute increments of lunch action.
Oh, okay. Wow, okay. And then including the passing time. And how is the staff doing? I know that there are definitely groups of some of the educators who have, you know, really needed some extra help. And I know that at the high schools, that they have been working very well with educators. So I'm wondering at your building?
So again, you know, I said before, like, support looks different in different ways and having to make sure that we're going to different teachers and we're supporting them for their individual needs. Some, again, spacing, some of the barriers that we talked about. Others, for instance, you know, just the timing of it all with our orchestra and Dan and making sure that they have what they need. I think we've been able to calm some of the nerves and the anxiety of some of the teachers, some of the teachers that had, again, those concerns. You're never going to be able to fully mitigate the concerns, right? But we want to make sure that we're supporting them the best way we can. And I truly believe that the staff, for the most part, are ready to have the kids back and looking forward to it. But again, they're nervous and hesitant and we're just making sure that we address their individual needs, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Befeld?
Yes, yes, thank you. I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Phillips?
Sure. Is high flex learning, is that where, just when, so you have two classrooms of kids in the same class and the teacher backs back and forth? Or they're on Zoom in one class or like, what is that?
So that's what it would be. So in some instances, the proximity will allow a teacher, for instance, in our STEM program, if we're going to utilize one workroom in her classroom, she can actually talk to at the doorway and address the kids. But with the high flex, what we'd actually have is six, seven, eight kids, whatever, however many kids that we need to make it safe and have the teacher feel safe, will go into a different room and yes, they will high flex in via Zoom. But again, the teacher can always come in and assist them with any, we're making sure that the proximity is.
And the teacher that's supervising, she's on, he or she is on their prep period and they're, while they're doing that, they're supervising that group as well? So we kind of have two, two-
Yep. We're actually going to be able to do this with student aides, myself, so we're hoping that we're not going to have to utilize any teachers to take their prep time from them, so.
Okay. That's my question. As far as in general, I wanted to go into some of the CDC stuff. One was, one recommendation I read was staggered entrance and was that explored? And can you talk about where, I know we didn't get there, but like, what did we talk about and what we're, you know, that was definitely a recommendation by CDC and just want to know like how we explored that and where we landed on staggered entry?
Do you mean staggered entry by time or by where they come in?
It said by time.
Well, we do, we do stagger-
To reduce the crowds at a big funnel or however you, however you thought about it. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think, and the principals can correct me, but I think the approach we took was making sure that entry and exit is, we use more doors than we normally do versus staggering the times going through the same doors, so.
And we do, we do have different entrances. We also stagger the passing times. So you don't have sixth, seventh and eighth graders all in the hallway at once. We actually staggered them a couple of years ago, so that helps. And then, for instance, instrument drop off, we want to make sure that kids aren't all flocking towards the orchestra and band room so that we have rollable, we have rolling carts where kids can just drop their instruments off and then the teachers come and get them and roll them in. So that's all taken. And then we stagger, time-wise, the end of the day, the eighth graders get out at 3:20, seventh grade, 3:25, sixth grade, 3:30.
Okay. What other recommendations CDC had was around lunch and when you can't socially distance by six feet, you put up Plexiglas barriers. Did we explore that and where did we land? I've seen it at restaurants and things like that. It seems to be working. People like it. Just wanted to know where we started with that, where did we land?
I mean, I don't think we've, but we talked about it. We talked about every single option and decided not to go down that path with it and felt we could get maximum distance and maximum space. One of the concerns I have with Plexiglas with students is that it restricts airflow. And there's some people that, some of the experts would say, you shouldn't have it with students because the offsetting component of, yeah, the, whether it's it or airborne that come out of, that the Plexiglas would protect, that the loss of air, airflow, it's a balance there. So we've looked at with Plexiglas and really tried to focus Plexiglas on the areas where there's maximum interaction. So whether it's the teachers or the desks or main entrances or in this building, you can see where it's at, where there's receptionists. As far as in between students, we have not, we have not done the Plexiglas.
Yeah, we just called out like lunch because it's more than 15 minutes. It looks like we're going to be able to do three feet of distancing during lunch when they have their masks off for more than 15 minutes. So all those are close contacts and I saw that recommendation, so I was just curious. The other one, the last one, I think, is, it was like the second bullet point was prioritizing in-person instruction over extracurricular and sporting events. And I just wondered, you know, what kind of changes are we going to make to extracurricular and sports and things like that to accommodate the in-person learning as recommended by the CDC? Or what we explored or just kind of that?
Yeah, there's been some discussion actually at the WIA and the Department of, or the State Department of Health and Human Services has said they do not recommend going backwards from what you've been doing. So if what you've been doing has been working, don't go back. So they're not going to issue any guidance that's going to say, step back and if, for the co-curriculars for band or music, arts, sports, they said, keep going on. My plan would be that we continue down that path. We haven't seen any, we haven't seen that co-curriculars have had a negative impact on the caseloads in the schools. If that were the case, we would certainly, certainly address it.
So it's a WIAA decision and not our decision, is that what I'm hearing?
No, it's a local decision. If the school board would say you can't do sports, then we can't do sports. WIA has set up, what they have done is put the opportunity in place to be able to do it. But they've also given guidance all along and their guidance is through, based on their medical committee, Dr. Walters from Children's Hospital and a couple of other people. But they are recommending to not go backward.
Okay. I know we had some outbreaks from some sporting events earlier this year and I just, and then connecting those dots to what the CDC recommends for going back, I just want to make sure we touched on it. I think that's it for now. I just wanted to hit, since we're referencing that document earlier, just want to make sure we hit those high points.
I'm going to go to some folks who are virtual. Mr. Meyer? Any comments or questions?
Yes, questions, comments and questions. First, two or three weeks ago, I would not have been favorable about the idea of following this meeting because it was a thing that we had decided. However, after the CDC issued their new guidelines and the CDC this month, I think we can trust, I felt we had an obligation to, as a board- I felt we had an obligation to, as a board, consider what the CDC had to say. And I did communicate with Dr. Erdl that I would support a vote like tonight if we were CDC compliant under the new statement from the current CDC. And right now, my inclination is to vote no, but I fully support the decision of the board and I support that we're calling the role tonight to make this decision. I also support that we have a shorter public comment because we need, I need to deliberate with the board. And I need to do it while I'm not fatigued and I still have all my wits about me. So, thank you. As I'm looking at things, the CDC guidelines said if we are orange, six feet separation is required. During the course of this week, we dropped from 52 orange to the new number, I think it was 45, was it 45 something? So we're yellow. And yellow, according to those new guidelines, say we have to be as much six feet as possible. Well, I asked Dr. Erdl this week, while in our classrooms, what would you speculate? And I know we haven't done like a Six Sigma black belt analysis of distance. So it's all kind of a guess. I'm a person who does prefer actual counts to know, to be sure we know what we're talking about. But, and Dr. Erdl, please correct me if I misunderstood you earlier this week because I'm prone to doing that misunderstanding people. But we are, we are less than 50% in our classrooms with the students at six feet. We are capable of keeping our teachers six feet from the students. So I need to hear, number one, I need to hear from my thinking, please. I ask to hear what the rest of the board members think about that. And I, my reflection on that is that after a year of having to mitigate for this virus, this pandemic, that that, the situation we're in now in the high school is likely the best we can do. Unless we start to build more rooms that we're doing about as well as we can, as good a job as we can. And we need to be very proactive about communicating that to parents that they, they're informed when they send their young people into our classrooms, what that distancing actually is. And in that case, it makes masking even more important. Masking and proper masking, of course. So I am struggling with that. My inclination is that this is what we have and this is the best we can do in the school district that we have. And in my thinking, our ability to get better as compared to our ability as to what we do once we've gotten as good as we can be, well, that could be a different answer. And if something is as good as it can possibly be and with the cards were dealt, well, I may be more inclined to say we need, if we can bring the young people back five days a week, all of them, versus if there was possibly more we could do, then I'd be inclined to wait. So that's my thinking on that. So that's a pivot point for me. That's a decider question for my vote. There's one other decider question for my vote. And that is the, whether we hold to our April date to give more teachers a chance to get their first shot of the vaccine. I did some quick amateur searching in the past few days and it seems that the Pfizer shot, and I'm sure the medical people can keep me correct on this, but the Pfizer shot may be 90% effective on, after the first shot, after three weeks. The Moderna, maybe 80%. I mean, but it's pretty good, you know, really, if you, to my thinking, if you've gotten one shot. So I struggle here with the idea of not taking our month of March as we already have in place to give our teachers that month's chance to get their first shot, to give them that level of protection considering the status of the rooms. Now, of course, as we know, mitigation with respect to them not having a first shot is that they can and need to remain six feet at least from the students. And they need, everybody needs to be sufficiently masked and properly masked in the room with good fit and not pulled down off your nose and all those kinds of things. So those are my two points where I'm tipping back and forth right here. And I would appreciate any perspective from, you know, the board with respect to what the other six board members think about that. And of course, any correction on my understanding of the facts from administration and from the medical people. So thank you.
Any, any clarifications from medical advisory panel or others that can? There's a lot Mr. Meyer shared.
Yeah, you know what, Mike, I'll respond, just is this as good as we can get? Yeah, I mean, we're putting everything we can into this to get our kids back into school. It's, I mean, I don't know what else, what else we can do within our buildings to get these kids back. I think we're doing, like I said, I meet with these other superintendents and I think we're doing as much, if, I mean, we're doing more than a lot of school districts, a lot. And our success rate with the virus, you know, we're not eliminating it, but that's not the goal. The goal is to reduce the risk, not eliminate the risk. And everything we do and every step we're taking is to reduce that risk. And can we, like, you know, is it, is it an issue of reminders, pull your mask up, keep those on and really being aggressive with that? Yeah, we're going to, we're going to double down on those efforts to make sure our kids and everybody else are wearing masks the way they're supposed to. We have a good number of people that want double, double mask and do everything we can to support that. So, I mean, I think this plan that we have that we've worked through, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what's missing out of it. I think it is the best that we can do.
Mr. Meyer, I can answer from the vaccination standpoint. The stance that we're going by still in the US is it is a two-dose regiment. You are considered fully vaccinated two weeks after the second dose. Is there other countries that are going with spacing their doses further apart? Yes, and it's not necessarily based off of efficacy data. It's more based off of availability of first doses for people and it's just a different strategy to go by. Do, is there a significant amount of protection from the first shot? Definitely there is. But we are still of the stance, and I think the medical advisory board, we didn't speak about this specifically, but just nationally, we are a two-dose, we're going by a two-dose regiment as well as considering fully vaccinated two weeks after the second dose. I don't know if that helps answer your question though.
Yeah, that does. You know, I've been hearing that the debate in the media amongst the world-class experts, you know, Dr. Osterholm pleading for a data review of what to do, you know, the efficacy of the first dose. And Dr. Fauci speaking as you have just done, Dr. Nolan. So that's the, you know, we all know that's a discussion going on. And I, you know, thank you for your further explanation. I appreciate it.
I just wanted to weigh in too. It was after the last, you know, meeting and some of the concerns, Mr. Meyer, about the vaccines. It left me kind of wondering what the plan was too. And I know you shared a lot of those concerns. And, and so I kind of poked around too. And I know you've all seen it, but for everybody else listening in the community, you know, the plan that's in place that Caitlin and with the help of the health department and Laura Geisler and others all involved in that planning is, it's really solid. I mean, right down to having people available in case there's a reaction. It's, and people to help get doses across the street safely. And it's just, it's, it's a solid, solid plan. And so for those of you in the community listening and any teachers, it really sounds like they're geared up and ready to go. And, you know, we look forward here to assisting too, you know, if we can. And, but also along those lines, you can remember that, you know, where teachers are actually getting the illness is so far not been from students. And so it's still really, it's still really important to remember that while they're vaccinated, that, you know, you still have to exercise caution and mitigate in other ways by distancing from each other and maximizing the use of Zoom for meetings as opposed to all grouping in one room and being cautious when they're around each other. And then also in the community, you know, like the rest of us. So vaccines will be a nice layer. But I'm not sure how much it's going to help with as a school mitigator, but it certainly will be a really nice extra added benefit. And then just to clarify, you know, this document is so thick and hard to work through. And, but they, you know, CDC comes out pretty clearly saying, don't wait for the shots to open your schools. The other one thing I share with you, Mr. Meyer, is just the frustration over the six feet, you know? And it's, and yeah, it's, there's just nowhere to put, nowhere to put students, you know, unless, you know, we kind of pony up another 300 million, right? For new awesome high schools where everybody can sit six feet apart. I'm sure my kids would be all for that. But again, I think this document, when it came out, is my understanding, and I talked to a couple other district nurses to get their take on it, is that it really wasn't meant to be used as an on-off switch for whether we stay in or go out. It was really like to help districts that haven't even gotten a chance to get their kids back into school, to give them a pathway to get, a road to get back into school. And then from there, once they were in, to gauge your success, not by what's happening in the community, but by what's happening actually in your district. And I think that even though that six-foot thing will be a challenge forever, COVID will probably never disappear from this planet. We've done such a great job, actually, I shouldn't say we, because I had nothing to do with it. You know, the people, Caitlin and everybody and Melissa early on, who's done, who put all these mitigation measures in place, they've worked so well that we would be the first to know, they would be the first to know and very quickly, given our awesome contact tracing, if suddenly something wasn't working. So I look at the CDC document as others have and think to myself, this isn't really like telling you when to switch the light on and off for in school. It's to get kids in and then let your successes define themselves. And we're fortunate because we've already been able to define those. So sorry for being long-winded, but I share those, those two concerns. But I think, I think we have literally done all we've, all we can do. And in so doing, we've actually done an awesome job. And this vaccine thing, they sound like they're really prepped and ready to go.
I'm going to go to Mr. Rolland.
Thank you. And thank you to the entire team for all you've done. Couple of quick questions. I know there has been a lot of work that's gone into the mitigation plan. So no need to go deeper into the details. But for the folks who, right, haven't been able to see the plan and dive into the details and just for the board, I'm just, would love to hear just like exact answers about like the minimum amount of feet that we can guarantee in our classrooms at lunch and in specials. And if that answer varies at different schools, then maybe it might make sense to, you know, have each school kind of speak to it. But what I'm looking for is the minimum number of feet at lunch, in class and at specials. Is there a minimum, like for in classrooms, where you can guarantee we can do three feet? Is that something we can say for sure?
I think we can say it for sure. I don't think, I mean, that was, as we've gone through, we've said, like, I know Seth and I had a number of conversations about, that's not good enough. So that's where the high flex came and the movement. So we're going to have three feet at all, all of our secondary schools. You know, do I want to say guarantee? I, yeah, it's intended like the tape mark, but they're going to move off that. Kind of like how we have it, we have six feet now, but we also get, we get quarantines because we're humans and there's some, going to be some human interactions that go the wrong way. So I don't want to say guaranteed, but I can say.
I'm looking more for like the operational, like operationally, we are creating a model for at least X amount of feet, you know, in class, at lunch and in specials. Can we, at least model-wise, can we say like definitely three feet in class is what we're building? Definitely what amount of feet at lunch? And definitely what amount of feet in specials like bands, you know, choir, something like that? I know that people will move around, but what we're creating, what does that look like?
The greatest extent possible, but I would say in classrooms, we said three feet. Make sure we have three feet. That, we try to stay away from the foot, you know, the six-foot, not stay away, but we used it as if we can get to six feet, get there. If you can't get to five feet, get to five, whatever it is, the greatest, like we've, we've emptied classrooms to move people to corners and just really maximize the space that we have. I guess it goes to Mr. Meyer's point, is it the best? Yeah, I mean, it is, it's not, it's not six feet for every single student at lunch. But also, and I do want to, I want to point this out too, that for those students that are uncomfortable during lunch and any of those times, we're going to have spaces. We have spaces at all four buildings where they can go, where they can be much more than six feet probably spaced out and be by themselves and that they can, a safe, I guess, a safe place and a safe closed off space for lunch to try to address that piece. So I know, Mr. Rolland, you had asked about that. So I wanted to make sure I had mentioned that and didn't forget. But, yeah, I mean, it's, we're going to be three feet in the classrooms and the goal is six feet in lunch. I don't think we're going to get there for six feet in lunch. In the gym at East, sitting in the bleachers, you're going to be six feet. In the hallways, separated by, yeah, you're going to get six feet of distance. Certain areas, depending upon choice of where these students sit, and we're not going to be there. But we looked at the CDC guidelines. I mean, I don't know that it has changed a whole lot, other than the plans have changed and it's been more difficult. I can stop talking if any principal has anything, Mr. Hughes or Mr. Larson, anything to add to that? No. To the greatest extent possible, doesn't bring a lot of satisfaction to some people and I understand that. But, I mean, if you, if you come in and see, and it just, I mean, we can do a video tour of the schools when it's going and see that we're maximizing every single spot that we have in our schools. I mean, there's areas of our schools that are being used that probably haven't seen the light of day. That probably doesn't sound good. We're maximizing the quality space that we have the best that we can. We're not using the third floor.
The tunnel.
But I, and I understand that because that's been a sticking point forever, to the greatest extent possible. I mean, we, I think I told you that I pulled up from WASA, what they gathered when they were having this discussion last week. And they went and they got from all these school districts, New Berlin, theirs was, we don't think it's possible, to Kimberly was perhaps. And all these school districts had, they didn't necessarily say they wanted the six-foot target. It's like, well, we'll get there or whatever. I think we're taking a stronger stance on it. I think the board has pushed that and I think that's kind of why we're in that position of saying, we've maximized. I feel comfortable saying we've maximized every single spot that we can. And I think, I mean, I feel really good about it being safe. I'm good sending my kid back to school. So I, I mean, I always, that's kind of my litmus test. Would I send my own kids into it? Would I put myself into that situation? I have and I will with my, my son. And again, that's, that's my own litmus test. And for everybody else, it's a little bit different. And I want to make sure we can get everybody back that wants to be back and have them feel really good about it. I know it's going to take a couple of days for people to feel confident and comfortable, including the staff, similar to what it was with elementary. I mean, that standard we used at elementary and I, I, you know, there's, there's challenges with human behavior and quarantines. But we continue to keep pushing the point and making sure we reinforce the spacing, reinforce the masking, reinforce all those mitigation factors. Because if we don't, you know, I think the students and the parents that want their kids back at school, I think the students in particular, and I guess our principals have talked about it and that you see a little bit different attitude out of our students because they want to be in school. And they're going to do the things, for the most part, that they need to do to stay there.
So what I'm hearing is right, there's a goal of six feet for lunch. Is there like, so the, like, can we at least say? So what I'm hearing is right, there's a goal of six feet for lunch. Is there like, so the, like, can we at least say at a minimum, we would expect four feet? Like, is there just like, I think part of this meeting to me is like a trust building exercise for the staff and for the community and for the parents, for the students, the, you know, the student reps were on this meeting too, like certainty in some way is comforting, right? So if we can create some kind of certainty where we can say like, at a minimum, I think we can definitely deliver four feet. At a minimum, you just say that, that would be great. Just to like start building some like sense of what am I, what are we going to do here? You know?
I feel comfortable saying it's three feet. Everything we're doing, we're going to get three feet.
Okay. Okay. And then to build on the point about the, the cafeteria and the, the plans with students being able to go to a place besides cafeteria, if they're not comfortable in that environment. How soon, I know that plan is being worked on. How soon do we expect to, we have, you know, a, a known plan that's equitable and effective and that the entire district, if they so choose, you know, can participate in. I just want to make sure that it's not this, you know, ad hoc thing where this and that knows this teacher, and so they get a safe space, but maybe this other person who's shyer and doesn't advocate for themselves, like doesn't get that safer space, but they do want it. Like what, how soon can we expect to see that process? And how will that process be rolled out to the, to the community, to the board, to the students, whatever?
I know our principals were working today and developing their, their plans for the, the SEL, social emotional aspect of coming back. And that's going to be a component of the communication piece. That'll be on day one. That'll be communicated out. There'll be, all students will know exactly where they can go, what they can do and how to get there. That'll, yeah, that's day one, March 2nd.
Okay. And then I'll just go into a little like, I just want to address like two overall topics tonight, because a lot of people have asked me like, what has changed since January 25th? So I'd like to speak to that. And I'd like to spend some time just thanking a lot of the people who have, you know, been helpful on this topic. This is probably the last time we're going to be meeting on this topic. So let me just start with like, what has changed since January 25th, right? Now we have new clear CDC guidelines. We have less community spread and we have better operational readiness. We're more prepared to go. When we met on January 25th, the health and medical panel gave us some information, which was great, but there wasn't an explicit recommendation to either stay in hybrid or to go to five day, right? So I just want to make sure that the community understands what we heard. The panel told us that, you know, it, it may or may not be safe enough based on what our board's risk tolerance is. And on, and based on the district's ability to have strict mitigation plans in place. But now today, like, right, we have a CDC dashboard that we went through earlier with clear recommendations for when should we stay in hybrid and when should we advance to five days a week? You know, yesterday at three o'clock, for the first time, our district is now in the yellow area on the CDC chart, which is great. And it aligns to the recommendation from the CDC for full person, five day a week instruction. So any, but I guess what I want to say is anybody who has said that we have already met the CDC guidelines is, is not being truthful. We didn't meet that guideline truthfully until three o'clock yesterday. So it's just not true. We are just breaking into that safe zone. And I hope that the community spread will continue to be low enough and safe enough so we can go back five days a week. You know, on January 25th, we met, like just a couple of days before that, there were 65 new cases in one day on January 20th. And the CDC guidelines say if we get more than, I believe it's, what is it? 22 cases in a week, then we should remain in hybrid. So it's just, it just goes to show how different January 25th was than where we are now. Now we saw less than 25 cases in this past week. The positivity rate is below 3% on many days. And again, I'm just hopeful that that community spread will continue to be low enough, will be aligned to that CDC guideline. Let's see. I guess one of the other things I want to mention is just that over the course of the year, and this is just something I think the community needs to understand. You know, we had on January 12th, just gone into a new model of concurrent learning. And that was, you know, already creating some, some clumsiness in the day. We was getting a lot of emails from concerned parents, you know, TOSA connected parents who weren't getting their Zoom links for their first classes and this wonkiness of the shift. And that like shift, you know, wasn't seamless. And if we're really going to be honest with ourselves, like every single shift that we've made this year felt clumsy. The rollout of Canvas, you know, was, was a weeks long rollout, you know, to finally really get it right. TOSA Connected, concurrent learning, it just hasn't been like this clean and seamless experience. And that was okay when we're rolling out new technology. But to me, if we were going to be rolling out five day in-person learning, we had to get it right on day one. And I think it's my job as a school board member to vote no on a plan that's not strong enough. But today, now we have a plan that's much stronger. We have a more detailed operational plan. It's much more creative about distancing and more specific about lunches. So I guess that's why I feel like I voted no on January 25th about going back, but I'll be voting yes tonight because we have less community spread. We have clearer CDC guidelines and now we have a clear plan that we can execute. So let me go into thanking people. Thanks you to the staff for expressing all of their concerns about everything this year. You are so valued and you deserve more than lip service. You deserve a really safe place to work and I hope that we are getting there. I want to thank the students and the student reps, especially on the board for flexing and stretching so much. I want to thank the school board and the administration for making our buildings increasingly safer for staff and students. I want to thank the medical panel who volunteered their time. They didn't have to do that. They didn't get paid to do that. None of us are getting paid to do this. But they spent so much time providing great guidance, especially when we had almost no guidance from the federal or state government. Your expertise really made the difference. I want to thank all the families who wrote us. Joe McLough, if you're in the audience, thank you for being there every night at the board meeting. And I actually really mean it. I really think that all the feedback that we got helped us get to this moment. And thank you to the city council in Tulsa. I think your vote really helped to reduce community spread and it got us in this position that we're in today. Not everybody has been helpful in this process and there have been people that have made this year difficult. As Dr. Earl mentioned, the majority leaders on the joint finance committee voted to cut funding from our kids' schools because our school board gave families a virtual option via TOSA Connected, the WBA. So because we gave them that option, they're cutting our funding. And because of the way that we have tried to align to CDC guidelines, they're, and keep our kids safe, they're cutting our funding. That's not right. And those leaders should really atone for the harm that they've done to our district and our kids. There is a TOSA alderperson who voted against the mask mandate and he frequently posts pictures of himself, you know, refusing to wear a mask. And he went on the TOSA student newspapers, Facebook page, and he advocated for our schools to stop wearing masks, for our students to stop wearing masks. That's not right. And it doesn't help anyone. It just makes us harder. There are leaders in the state who put our teachers lower on the list to get vaccines. Our teachers were on track to get vaccinated this month until some folks decided to put 40% of the state's population in front of them. Teachers should have been in the front of the line alongside police and firefighters. As of February 11th, according to Edweek, there were 28 states, DC and Puerto Rico that have made teachers eligible to receive the vaccine. And Wisconsin is not one of them. That's not right. So our school board has done a lot to advocate for increased funding for summer school. We thought that would be a great option to help students catch up after this tumultuous year. I don't understand if there's any Democrat or Republican bill on that yet. I'm hope, I'm still hopeful that that's coming, but I'm not very optimistic. So I just feel like at a time when few were coming to our aid and there were actually some people actively working against us, we really had to hunker down and protect our own, protect our staff and our students. And we had to lean on good people like our med panel and our teachers and our students. I really just want to thank them. So thank you for this opportunity. I hope you vote yes on this plan. I hope you'll thank everybody who helped us and our kids. And I hope you'll call out all the people who made this year so completely unnecessarily difficult. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rolland. Mr. Don.
I have a question for the folks on our medical panel. So obviously we've seen the numbers drop quite a bit since last time we talked. Is there any literature out there to explain it and to help us understand why? Cause and I'll be very anecdotal from my own experience, I don't see a huge change in people's behavior, right? I mean, the folks who were wearing masks before are still wearing masks. The folks who weren't are maybe even less. Maybe that's a feeling. I don't have any stats, you know, just kind of trying to read the crowd. And as you get outside Wauwautosa, you know, and if you venture out, you know, into more rural and suburban areas, mask wearing is less and less, but yet we're still seeing the numbers go down. So I'm curious, one, if there's any literature, I'd really like you to answer it there. Any facts as much as we can, which maybe don't exist. I understand that. And if we don't have that, do you have any thoughts, theories? I mean, what is it? And obviously I'm asking this question because I, I, I'm just like everybody else. I'm thrilled the numbers are going down, safer for our school, safer for our community. But of course, there's a part of me that wonders, if we don't know why it goes down, we also aren't going to know why it goes back up. Obviously vaccines are coming, but you've told us that, you know, that's not going to take a huge impact for some time yet. So thoughts, theories, and most importantly, facts, if you have them, I'd appreciate it.
No literature that I'm aware of. I have opinions, but I'll defer to Sean and AJ to see if they have know of any literature as to why we're seeing this.
I don't, I don't know of any literature either, Tim. I think there's a lot of people that are starting to speculate as to why, but I don't think anybody has any great, any like great insight yet as to the reason. I mean, I think I, I think I know why there's a good chance it could go up. And, and, you know, with the, with the, the emergence of the new variants for sure. On that front, luckily, as we get more people vaccinated, we know that the, the vaccines that we have currently available are are effective against the variants that are circulating. But as to, to why it went down, I think that's still sort of a mystery. I know if Dr. Nolan, if you have any, if you've read anything recently.
Nobody has the answer for you. And I agree with you. If we had the answer as to exactly why, because it's not just in Wisconsin, it's nationally. I mean, we're seeing incredible drops of, you know, 40% over, over what a two month period since the beginning of the year. I think there are some really smart people that are making guesses at it that are probably relatively accurate and, you know, give us six months to actually publish papers on it and we'll give you a solid fact answer. But it's likely very multifactorial. I know in Wisconsin or in our local area, there are some, you know, folks who are very into masks and some folks who weren't. And probably that behavior hasn't changed, but nationally behaviors have changed a bit for people, just with how sick the country got during, over the winter, it did change some people's behavior for sure. We, we are probably hitting and, and this is all conjecture from people smarter than me. We are probably hitting a, a point where we are getting some type of herd immunity as well. And we also are hitting a point where we have, what is, I think, at least 20 million or so, or folks have a, at least a first dose vaccine into them in a week or so afterwards. And so that, that, all those things kind of coming together, as well as viral things like this usually have a seasonal component to them. And so they will kind of come up and down as a natural history of the disease process. So probably a lot of different factors and no facts for you, unfortunately, just like, just like COVID has been so far.
Thanks. I appreciate that. And I sort of assumed that was the answer, but you know, I haven't found anything on it myself either. So I appreciate that.
But one thing to add, sorry, is
No, please.
Our expectation would be if it is those factors coming together, especially as we get warmer weather and people are outside more and not as closed in, and more people get vaccinated and more people get the illness, our expectation would be, and our hope would be that these numbers stay low going into the spring and into the summer, hopefully. If it's all those things coming together. AJ did bring up the variants, which, you know, nobody knows exactly what's going to happen with that. And there's not a lot we can do other than all that awesome mitigation that we've been working on for the past, you know, eight months, nine months or so.
Yeah, I didn't want to be doom and gloom about the variant, you know, at all. I mean, the, the one thing that we've learned about this is that even with the variant, the things that we do, they work, right? That particularly with it, with, with good masking, I mean, that's still, even with a more contagious variant, it still works. So that's, that's got to be the cornerstone of, of what we're doing.
Thanks. I appreciate those thoughts. Certainly a great thing to see greater someday when we understand why. So I appreciate that a lot. I want to thank Mr. Rolland for his thoughts. I don't think I can sum it up any better than he did. But as far, as far as our concern and thankfulness for all the people that have worked so hard this year, really make these decisions, which are really difficult and not even sure that we always get them right. But we, we've all put in our effort and have done our best. And our staff has been amazing and trying to be responsive and, and do what they can. I know teachers are worried and concerned. I'm worried and concerned too. But I, I do want to thank all of the people who put in the effort to put in the, the plans and seeing a very different plan in terms of quality and things tonight than we did last time. So I'm appreciative of that. I certainly have a lot of concerns still going forward. So definitely going to listen as people continue to talk tonight. But I do also want to address that, the idea of, of folks who have been working against us and that's incredibly unfortunate. We certainly received our letter from Mr. Dale Koyenga threatening to reduce our funding and that it came through. And that's really disappointing to hear. My four years on the school board, I've never heard from Senator Koyenga. He raised concerns about closing achievement gaps or concerns about minority students or students in marginalized populations. If he really had that concern, I would have expected to hear from him before this pandemic. He's never expressed that concern before. So I'm really disappointed that he chose that route to go and to threaten. And now even if he didn't cast a vote, pull funding from our schools, if you really care about our students and closing achievement gaps and helping our students get better and our district get better. And this isn't just for the state. Pulling funding is not the way to go. Reaching out a hand and saying, hey, what do you need? How do we get our teachers vaccinated? Let's get us back. That was the way to go. I really wish he and the other legislators who has that reducing funding, reduction of funding would have gone that route. We've been happy to have that conversation and to figure it out. And maybe we don't all agree in that. But to use the bully pulpit, the funding is unfortunate. And it's not going to factor in my decision. So I really appreciate Dr. Roll telling us, you know, he doesn't believe that should factor in and it won't. But I do appreciate everyone's time and effort they put in. Again, the medical panel, you guys have been great. Thank you very much for, for coming out tonight. I am still greatly concerned about our teacher. At the toasted together Black History Month celebration last night, there was a great quote, which I'm sure wasn't invented that night. In fact, I, I think it's from Stephen Covey, but something to the effect of, change happens at the speed of trust. If, if this passes tonight, we're probably operating at a negative level of trust potentially with our staff. And that's something we need to move forward on and figure that out because change is happening to them that they don't really have a whole lot of control over. And that's really hard. It's a really hard thing. So I'm hopeful that, that, that gets better. You know, I, I'd really like to see us really engage with our staff and understand how we can do better and get better. I, I do have an overall concern of just educators leaving the profession after this year. And that's a, not just a Wauwautosa problem, that's a national problem. It's a big issue and we already were at a teacher shortage. So that's weighing heavily on me as I kind of sit here and think of, of how to vote tonight. That teacher concern, teacher shortage and that, that trust is a struggle. So those are my thoughts to this point. I'll move forward and let, let other board members start.
I want to go to students who are here virtually, if anyone has any questions or comments, and then I'll wrap up with Ms. Freely and myself. I'm not sure who, no, we can't, we're not picking you up. Jamie, who is that?
It is, I believe that might have been Aiden. Aiden, was that you?
She said she's going to join from her phone. So maybe we can go to somebody else first.
Okay, great.
I actually have a question. I just wanted to know exactly what the student support system was going to be like at both middle school and high school, just because at least for East, it is pretty mixed with students who want to go back five days, and then there are students who feel very uncomfortable going back five days. And so is that the student support system, is that going to be counselors reaching out to students, or what is that going to look like?
Mr. Hughes or Mr. Dr. Larson? Mr. Perelski, how about that?
I appreciate the question. I know today we talked as a secondary team, so I will allow Mr. Hughes, Dr. Larson, and I also know Mr. Kropolsky and I believe Ms. Kreiser on, on virtually to kind of give some specifics. But I know what we did talk about was going back to the beginning of the year, one thing that we've always said is kids do well if they can. And that's really the phrase coming off of Ross Green. And so we wanted to make sure that all of our students in the midst of all of the craziness of this year, regardless of mode of instruction, are ready to come back. And what we really looked at is making sure that we have intentional time during the day where we continue to build relationships, that we're looking at making sure that in those classrooms, there's natural opportunities for us to pull out the assets, talents, hopes of our students. We're also doing more as far as at the student services level, looking at our data. Who are students that are showing indicators of needing more help? I know Dr. Erdl has, has in the previous meeting brought up the amount of students who were probably academically struggling and showing indicators that are different from previous years. Our student services staff is also monitoring and then cross referencing that with attendance and developing some individual plans for, for students who might be struggling with either coming to school, learning virtually, or just having that success that we want all of our kids to have. And then the last is, we know that our students aren't going to do well if our adults aren't in a good spot. And I think that all four of the building leaders, as well as our elementary school principals, they've done a wonderful job of, of creating time for the teachers and other educators in the building to learn and grow professionally, to support them emotionally, and to also understand that, you know, their, their feelings are real and to acknowledge them. So I think I gave you probably a very broad answer. But I do want to at least be able to tap Mr. Hughes, Dr. Larson, and the other administrators so that you can hear some specific things that are going on at each building and each grade level. So.
Okay, thank you. I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that those students were taken care of, just because there are a lot of students that have anxieties that probably wouldn't reach out. So I just want to make sure that they are advocated for. Thank you.
We're going to have a couple additional specific, oh, and I think that may have been Clint too. Clint, was that you?
All the principals added some, some specifics that we can commit to on a, on a document today, and we can all go over that. But to add to what Mr. Perelski said, just speaking broadly, educators get into education to work with kids, and I'm really confident in our staff at Whitman, teachers, counselors, admin, and everybody in between. And I know the other principals are too, to meet the needs of the students, whatever they are. And our staff has been incredible in the past year. I can speak for Whitman. I'm sure the other buildings would say the same thing. I have all the faith in the world that they'll, they'll meet whatever social, emotional, or any other kind of needs that come up. I've seen it time and time again during the pandemic. And I think for a lot of our staff, especially counselors who are exceptional at Whitman and Mr. Brock, my associate principal, myself, you know, we want to work with students and we are spending a lot of our time, a disproportionate, disproportionate amount of our time in meetings, working with adults. And it, it'll be more like normal to us. You know, we will go back to working with students more than adults, I think. So that said, some of the things that I listed at Whitman on our documents. Find it now. Just regular student service check-ins with students that need it, that, that we're aware of, teachers taking anecdotal data and focusing on building community within combined groups, giving references to counselors when they're ready for it. Of course, all the mitigation strategies, a reset of expectations school-wide, split grade level lunches, a lot of these things have been mentioned already, but just minimizing the the number of students that are together, the staggered passing times and students entering in different points, different parts of the building. Those are all, you know, some of the mitigation strategies. Regular blackboard and parent communication tools to communicate available student services support. And of course, I think this might be the most important one, just the, the previous concurrent work that's been done already that's blended cohorts and allowed students to develop relationships with one another despite being in different cohorts.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I wanted to add on to that, you mentioned that advocacy for those that might not be comfortable reaching out for themselves. And one thing I know, and this, this is pre-pandemic, is students often come to us with helpful tips on, on their friends and just saying that that might be, you know, someone to reach out to. So that's another thing, that advocacy for one another between students is huge. And communicating our student services schedules and admin schedules, our students can see administrators as well via our student newsletters and blackboard.
Other? Anything else that we want to share from folks in the room? Aiden, do you feel like your question's been adequately answered? Was that, no, that wasn't. Aiden, you couldn't talk because you were on the phone. That was Ellie. I'm confusing myself here. Ellie, do you feel like you've got enough of an answer?
Um, yes, I do. Thank you. I just, yeah, I guess I just was concerned just because there are students that I want them to feel like pigeonholed, especially when you have to go back five days. And, and yeah, there are students that probably wouldn't reach out. So, but I, I'm, I agree with all the supports that you have in place. And just keeping that communication with the students would be really helpful as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Aiden, are you ready? And then Mira, I'll check in to see with you if you've got any questions.
Yeah, my first question, sorry, my video is going to turn off because I have to click in my notes, but I was wondering if a student does test positive, will with contact tracing, will all students within six feet of that positive student be put into quarantine?
Contact tracing will be done exactly the way we've been doing it. So it's going to be consistent with, within six feet and for 15 minutes. Yeah, same way we've been doing it.
Okay. And then I was wondering for lunch, when students are seated at the rectangular tables where six, six students per table, how do you contact trace that? Is there, is there like protocol for how to account for lunch exposure?
I think there's two components. One is self-report, who's sitting by who, and the other one is the verkotic system. So we have all of our lunchrooms are covered by camera systems. And so that's the other piece that we, we use for contact tracing.
Thank you. My, my last question was I was just a little confused as to why, I, I was just looking at the Wauwautosa East plan. But for some spaces, there is six feet of distancing, and then some spaces, there's only three feet of distancing. And I guess for me, the inconsistency from student to student based on where kids are sitting was I don't know. I was just wondering if, if people see that inconsistency causing any issues.
Yeah, I'm not sure about inconsistent. I mean, it's, it's, I think, like we said, it's going to be, if we can get six feet, we'll have six feet. If we can have more, we'll have more. But if it's going to be three, and like I said, in the bleachers at East High School, Mr. Hughes, is that correct? We'll have, we'll have six feet. In some areas, it's going to be, maybe in the Raider Room, it might be three feet. So, and ultimately, it's going to come down to if somebody's not comfortable where they're at. We're going to have, in my opinion, I don't care if they cover the floor space of every hallway at East High School and West High School and two middle schools, because we're in a different time and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to accommodate students the best we can.
Okay, thank you.
Mira, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I actually did have two things. So with the piggybacking off of Aiden's, with the quarantines, with the quarantine counts, obviously with more kids, they'll be closer. Is that going to like knock a bunch more kids into quarantine at one time? Because you said that you are still maintaining the contact tracing and six-foot distance model. So at lunch, would like that entire table go and then in their classes? I'm just curious because, I mean, at first glance, that just sounds like a lot of people who would be quarantined if someone were to test positive.
Most likely, there'll be more people that will be quarantined because we have more people in school. It all depends on the amount of time they spend around individual students. It's going to be, I would tell you in the schools that have been going five days a week and have more kids in school, they have, when there's a case, there's more quarantines. It's just trying to reduce the number of cases. Like right now, no student cases, there are no staff cases and a couple of student cases. We wouldn't be, I think we had, might have had one today, but we just do the contact tracing in the elementary. We haven't seen when there are cases. In some cases, at some points, the whole section of students. But yeah, I mean, to answer your question, there's going to be more. We're expecting more when there are cases.
And then just based on what Ellie was saying earlier, I appreciate all of the measures that have been put in to promote students' social and emotional health. But from a leniency perspective, I feel like students are often told that they're going to be met with like patience and kindness and that there will be an adjustment period. And that adjustment period always gets cut kind of short, that the being lenient and stuff like that expires very quickly. And so I'm just curious what in regards to like getting to class late and homework being turned in late, because it will be a massive adjustment as we haven't been in school for, it'll be like a year and two weeks. I'm just wondering if they're on like a teacher level, just based on those kind of normal day-to-day struggles, if there's anything in place.
Ms. Bowers or Mr. Hughes, do you have an answer for that?
Obviously, it will be a change when we come back five days for everybody who's in the building. We have stressed grace for our teachers, for our administrators, and for our students throughout the year. It will, you still are bringing the academic habits that you have. You have been turning in homework. Our students have been turning in homework. Now it will be with more students in a room. I think that those habits will continue to be strong. We will need, like we do at the beginning of a school year, a little work on students getting to where they need to be. The tardiness has been, the lack of tardiness has been great this year. I hope that that will continue. For me at East High School, one of the biggest worries, I think, is the increased drop-off and the traffic that's going to back up in front of school. It's been nice this way, so we're going to have to just be mindful of that. But we will work with our teachers and stress that. Communicate, talk with students, talk with parents about what your needs are and expectations are. It's, it's been a theme, I think, that's been spread throughout the district is giving the grace that we need in a situation like this for our learners, our teachers, and our parents and staff.
Thank you. That, that sounds good. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. I think we're up to Ms. Fraley.
So three questions, two comments, but I'd like to actually start by saying what a pleasure it always is to follow our student school board members. It is so fantastic to see the critical thinking that you all are doing on the really nitty-gritty level and the big picture level and how you are caring for your classmates. And as I think about the vision of a graduate that we are working on as a district, I just see you all exemplifying that in so many different ways. So thank you to all of you. You actually touched on a couple of the things that I wanted to raise. And so, yeah, I also want to call out the students that we've heard from writing us emails and reaching out and calling, texting, and, and on both sides saying, Mrs. Fraley, I'm really, really nervous about going back and please send me back. I am struggling. So I don't think we can underestimate how important student voices and how I love not just hearing from high school students, but we've heard from middle school students. We had elementary school students that spoke at a student school board meeting. So kudos to the parents as well for encouraging their kids to lift their voices up. So my, all of my questions are actually an extension on things that were touched on. So to Mr. Rollins' point about like, what's the, what's the bare minimum on those feet, right? One of my questions is, is if a teacher does not feel like that bare minimum is being met in their room, I really appreciated Dr. Larson, you calling out the creativity we're having to demonstrate because that's the reality we live in. Do teachers know what the process is for handling a concern when they don't feel like those spacing needs are being met?
Yeah, they should reach out to their principal first and foremost. If they don't like the answer they get from the principal, then it's, they need, then they can go up to the district office. But when it comes to the spacing piece, I mean, there's, there's a whole host of people that are committed to making sure that that works.
Okay.
Including myself.
Yeah, because I realize we're going to have to be creative.
Right.
The, the high flexing, things like that. Second question is, I know the timeline that we're currently looking at allows teachers two full-time prep days to adjust plans, which I know good teachers plan weeks in advance, and I appreciate that. Specific to students and how we're preparing them to adjust. So we heard administrators talk about on day one, the expectations are going to be clear in terms of what folks can expect, et cetera. Is there any way that we can ensure that students, say, the Friday before end of day, get a, here's what you can expect when you come back next Tuesday? I think to Ellie's point about like anxiety, sort of like coming to grips with what's coming may be helpful in helping students transition in when it comes to logistics and, you know, wrapping their heads around what to expect versus walking into day one and feeling like it's all coming at them. So.
I was just going to say, turn right, you'll see the heads nodding.
Yeah, I'm like, okay. I'm like, what am I looking at? Okay, because I, I think that's really important, not just for parents, but for students, so that parents can be reinforcing and talking about those safe spaces and everything like that. Okay, that's really great to hear. And my last question is about that first day back, right? So we know that whether it's the second or the eighth or whenever it is, that first day is a lot. And I don't want to underestimate the assistance that might be needed or appreciated at the school level. Underestimate the assistance that might be needed or appreciated at the school level. And I don't want to discount that I didn't say this for elementary school, but it's, I think it's a different beast, given the volume. I'm curious if there is any additional support that you all need or want. On day one, two, three, that first week, whatever it is, in terms of additional bodies in the building to be keeping students moving through the hallways, looking for masks. I know Mr. Hughes was gracious in the first week of school, even with hybrid, I was standing in the hallway, you know. Do you feel like you have the support you need to ensure that week one goes as smoothly as possible so that students and staff feel the safety? Feel that people are looking out for their experience and that we have as smooth a transition as possible? I'm hearing guesses. Ms. Claybor, you feel good about that for West? Mr. Gronkowski?
Yes, ever. Yeah, for now, yep.
Okay, well, and I would just ask that, I really appreciate how the superintendent and the school district has handled the sub issue. Um, and I would just ask that if you all feel like you need more support on just like. Making the logistics happen, that you would let the the school district know and we can accommodate as best as possible. Okay, I'm I'm happy that these questions are getting such succinct answers. The last two things are are more comments. And a couple of different school board members spoke to this, but I just want to acknowledge this this piece about change. And that we did say April 5th. And I know there's a lot of folks, parents, teachers, students who are saying. Why are you doing this to us? Why are you changing? Um, and I think COVID has really made things difficult for everyone where you just want to be able to hold on to something so that there's some sense of normalcy. And I I just want to reassure all of us that like, we're all in this together, that change is hard. But we can do hard things. And I think that's what has made me love and stay in Wauwatosha. And so I I really would just encourage us to. Wherever possible, embrace that, you know, there were things that we had concerns about. We lifted them up, we saw change happening in a positive way. And I actually got an email today from a teacher who I really appreciated how solutions oriented they were. And they basically said, like, you got this email from me a couple of weeks ago where I was adamantly against X, Y, and Z. And here I am today saying like, okay, we we can figure this out. I'm not happy about this, but help us figure out how to make this happen. So. Teachers, I just want to put out there to you that. We actually have heard you and at the same time, I don't dis. I don't disconnect any of the frustration or the anxiety from what this situation is creating. And unfortunately, I think what COVID has done has illuminated. Challenges in our systems and structures that were already there before, and this just exacerbated them. To a point where I think the board is really going to need to to think about, and this goes to Mr. Rollin or Mr. Domon's point. How it is we come back from this in in our COVID recovery plan to figure out. Not just how it is that we create, you know, safe spaces, but how do we regain the trust of stakeholders, be it staff, community, students? Because everybody's in this, looking at it from the perspective of what they need as an individual. And I think as a board, we're being, we're asked to make a decision on a collectivist level. And and so, teachers, I just want you to know that we do have your best interests at heart. If we didn't, we would have. Sent everybody back to school in in August. And instead, I feel like we were actually very prudent and we waited and we weighed. Looked for data and we looked to see what was happening in other districts. And so I do hope that you can recognize that. This was not an easy decision. And at the same time, we did put a lot of time and thought into it. So. I am going to support this plan tonight because it did respond to. All of the concerns that we raised up and the numbers are going in the right direction. And at the same time. This is not the point that we can let up. We're gonna keep having to to deal with this for a very long time. So. Onward, I guess.
Thank you. I will save my time to move into community comment for thirty minutes. I would say now is the time, if you want to raise your hand, if you've got a comment, and then Jamie Price is going to. Randomly select ten folks from the list. We'll give you about a minute to raise your hand if you've got something that you want to add. Thank you, board, for your thoughtful comments and your questions. Do we want to take two minutes? Do we want to take five minutes of the board or we want to keep going? Keep going? Folks are eager. Uh, we'll probably get to one person in the room. Is there anybody who's not ever spoken at a school board meeting? If you'd like to begin, and then we'll take nine folks. From the virtual.
Hi, oh, should I go? All right, sweet. Hi, my name is Catherine Meyer. My address is two five six North one hundred tenth Street. I am a junior at Wauwatosha West High School and I have struggled massively with the hybrid model. At first, it was like, okay, couple of months, I could do this. But eventually, over time, I just, I've lost motivation. I really struggle with focusing in school sometimes and at home, it's even worse that there's so many distractions there. And now I'm starting to struggle with my mental health. I'm starting to feel, struggle with some depression and I I don't know what to do. I thrive really well with a busy schedule and that's why I did so good in school last year. I had pretty much all As in all my classes. I was in multiple clubs. I. Was one of those students that were like, I love learning, I love school, I'm gonna do everything I can. And I was so ready to take that same energy. And put it into this school year. And of course, COVID happened and, you know, things change and, okay, whatever, that's fine. It is what it is. But at this point, I I feel like I've had enough. I go to school and I feel like I'm not even learning anything. I feel like I'm not getting a proper education. Which is then leading into me being like, oh, shoot, is this gonna skirt my future? Is this gonna screw up potential dream jobs I want to do? Is this gonna screw up like colleges I want to go to, which has put a lot of worries and stress and just. Overall, just like negative thoughts in my brain. And it's it's been a massive struggle and I really hope that. Tonight, uh, the school board, we could finally go and move into a five day model again, because that would be totally awesome. And I've, you know, I've been listening and I've been hearing all the plans and all the comments and it sounds like everyone's pretty confident that. You know, like, um, moving the date to March 2nd would be a really good date because COVID has, COVID cases have gone down and. It seemed to have like a really strong plan set, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Jamie, feel free to call the next nine that you want to call from virtual.
Okay, Olivia Pelzek, you have the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Sandy Pelzek and I'm at twenty one oh three North Ninety First Street in Wauwatosha. And apparently I have my daughter's Zoom. Zoom name up. I just want to bring something up that was brought up, I think, by Nora, one of the student representatives at the previous meeting, and that's mask wearing. You know, we've talked about the number of students that are gonna be in class and the increase. In in people in the buildings and the three feet of space. So how are we going to make sure that. Students, I I I think staff has it under control, but students are wearing proper masks. That are effective as opposed to, you know, I've heard about in maybe the medical. Tal can comment about the neck gaiters being much less effective. And enforcement of wearing those masks and and consequences of not following the mask. Rule because I think, you know, with the potential to increase the number of kids in quarantine, that if we really keep up on the the mask wearing. Like AJ mentioned, that, you know, hopefully we can continue to move in the right direction and keep things going the way we want them to go. And then also want to emphasize what Leanne mentioned about communicating what's to come prior to the kids being in day one. I know Dr. Earl said that. The communication of the lunch situation and things like that would happen day one. I think it needs to happen before that to allow the kids to wrap their heads around that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Zolbya Granger, you have the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Zobera Granger. I live at twenty three seventy eight North Sixty Seventh Street. And I am a sophomore at Wauwatosha East High School. First, I would like to say is I am very impressed with you guys. Coming from not so much in life, I mean, I think you guys did an amazing job at this. I'm getting emotional about this because. I I value school a lot, actually. I mean, I value friendships, interactions. And I most definitely value my future ahead of me. I want to be a physician's assistant and it feels and it feels like if we don't have education right now and if we miss school for. A year, that is a huge delay in our generation. Like, what does this say for our future? I mean, I I would, first of the pandemic, I was really nervous. My anxiety was going through the roof. I don't, it was just mind boggling to me. And I think. I support going back five days a hundred percent with precautions needed. And I am, sorry, I'm I'm sorry, I was just, it's just like. And I really support the decision and I really thank you all guys for. The tremendous amount of work you guys have done and put in. I am just amazed at the plan. It feels like I'm listening to a. A medical committee on like a professional organization like the American Gastroenterology Association or something. It's just like, I'm wowed. I mean, other districts around the nation are going back to school. Cases are lowering. I checked the stats this morning and I was like, wow. And with the new presidential administration coming along, I think I've seen cases decline. Vaccine rollout that's happening. I heard that two hundred million Americans will be potentially vaccinated by July of this year. That is just incredible at how medicine works that way. And I just, I really consider going back five days a week. And I think it'll be good for our students' mental health, teachers' mental health and parents and a good routine to make positive decision making. I yield back. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for thanking us.
We don't hear that.
I don't hear that. My daughter says that every once in a while, but it's rare.
Eva Beisenstein, Ava, sorry, Ava Beisenstein. You have the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Ava Beisenstein and I am a senior at Wauwatosha East. I live at two one zero three North Sixty First Street. And so I'd also like to say thank you that a lot of students are appreciating your hard work. But I'd like to say that changing your decision to start five days a week earlier than the April decision is just. Another example of how extremely inconsistent the district has been this year. Um, when you voted to start five days a week in April, you gave a lot of students and teachers a firm date and it felt like hope at the time. Reversing this decision feels like a huge breach of trust to many students and teachers. Some students that I know have even made job schedules with their employers that cannot be reversed. And I'd like to add that you mentioned great points about student mental health. You're completely correct and it's not good right now for many students. And we do appreciate more support in this regard, but going back to in person school five days a week introduces introduces a brand new stressor. Now we're worrying about getting COVID from increased class size and we don't want to be the one that passes this on to our friends, our teachers and our families. And lots of people tonight are acting like this idea is going to be making a huge difference in our education. But I'd like to stress that it's really only adding eleven in person school days. Eleven days simply isn't worth it. And I can't advocate enough against this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Lurand, you have the microphone. Sarah, you're very quiet. We can hardly hear.
This is Sarah Lurand. I'm at two four four five North Ninety First Street. And I have both a student at Whitman and a student at West. My first point is really quick and just talks, uh, Mr. Roland was talking about trust. And in terms of setting up. Things to make them safe at the school. One, one other point that was made is that the middle school wasn't addressed much at the last meeting. One thing that I have brought to the safety person at the district. Was that the Whitman students currently don't have a rolling start. And especially as it's been colder, they've been all huddled together outside. Waiting to go in and I'm very concerned if this continues. With the addition of more students. So that was my first point. My second point is I really do appreciate the. Student liaison's perspective about the increase in anxiety and things about mental health. In our household, I have a compromised immune system. My son has worried about going back and bringing COVID home. But at this point, I think we would take the risk because the new rollout with the two day in person and two day on Zoom. Has not worked well. It has caused a lot of additional stress. Specifically, our son is a junior and is in a lot of very high level classes. And the workload has gone up tremendously. This point was actually brought up by Beth Tully last night at the West PTA meeting. When the meeting started, because she and others, you know, we've noticed that these already stressed kids are getting a lot more work in the new system. So as parents, you know, I am concerned about how our students are going to be supported when they come back. Because some students have thrived and that it's been great, but others have not and are quite behind in work. And have other anxieties about going in. So I'm really. Concerned about them coming into a place.
Sarah, you have twenty seconds.
At all different levels and making sure the teachers understand that and they're getting the support that they need. So thank you again for your time.
Next is Christopher Karans. Could you please state your name and address? You have the microphone.
Hello, it's Christopher Karan, sixty five seventy eight Washington Circle. I just want to say thanks to everyone for all their efforts. I know these are challenging times for everyone. I have two children, one at Longfellow Middle School in seventh grade and a sophomore at Wauwatosha East. I I speak on their behalf and mine. My employment has changed the way I work, so I work from home now. So lots of change for all of us, but both of my children. Animately ask me all the time, when can they go back? They their grades have suffered, their. Just emotional well being has definitely been affected in a negative way. And I I know there's a lot of challenges from every perspective, but ultimately, I think we should focus on. We should focus on what's best for the children. And I think we've come to a conclusion that it's safe to go back. And at this point, I think the pros to in-person full-time. Just without question outweigh the cons. So. I implore everyone to do what they can to vote yes to this change. I would also suggest that a month earlier is a huge difference. Um, every day is a difference to Dr. Erdl's point. I support that a hundred and ten percent. So. On top of all that, I just want to say thanks for everything that everyone does and. To uh, try to keep our children as the focus. Thank you.
Okay, next is Arianna Jackson. You. Oh, you're using an older version of Zoom, so I'm going to promote you to panelist. Just be aware that your. Oh, no, your video won't show because I'm. Doing the timer thing. So Arianna Jackson should be joining. Okay, you can speak.
I'm Arianna Jackson at twenty-three twenty-seven North LaFever Avenue in Wauatosa. And I'm a ninth grader at Wauatosa East. And as most students, I've been struggling a ton with my schoolwork and staying focused in class. With like this whole online experiment. I found that being in class is like the time that I can really get work done and done properly. While online, I have plenty of distractions with, like, I have younger siblings, older siblings, my mom. Like, there's too much things that I can get distracted by. And at some points, it feels as if teachers pay more attention to students in class than online. It began with me thinking like this whole entire online experiment thing was going to be fine, like time off, who wouldn't want to break? But it's so much stress and anxiety trying to do everything for all my classes. And with this being my first year at a high school, I feel like it should have been a good experience. But for me, now it feels as if it's going all down the drain. I'm failing two of my main classes. And I do try to get work done, but it is pretty challenging. I personally think that it is a great idea for students to go back five days a week. And I hope this date in March stays the same. So tonight, I hope you guys agree to bring us back full-time and thank you.
Thank you, Ariana.
Okay, um. Next is Kevin K. Please state your name and address.
Oh, hello, can you read?
Yep.
Oh, sorry about that. All right. My name is Kevin Coughlin. Um, I'm at, uh, my address is forty-one twenty-four. North One Hundredth Tenth Street and I am a ninth grader at Wauatosa West. Um, I, first of all, uh, obviously, I just want to start out with thanking everyone here from like all perspectives, whether it be from our. Medical Health Advisory Panel, the School Board, you know, our representatives from the district, like all of you have done a very good job about like. Being communicative and it's kind of clear that you're very, very try, you're you're trying really hard to make sure. Everything's working correctly. Um, the only thing I wanted to bring up, uh, what's really important to me personally, that I think there hasn't been as much. There's been a little bit, but hasn't been as much discussion on tonight that I still think is a really, really important part of our school is our teachers. Um, making sure our teachers are just immensely supported and feel. You know, relaxed and like they're prepared for this kind of shift. Because um, the sentiment I've gotten from a a few of my teachers is that, you know. Going five days per uh, going five days a week. Uh, on March second would just be a little stressful. And I know you guys have mentioned like you're giving them an extra day, but just. Making sure teachers feel like they have the resources that they need to get lessons done, right? Because uh, if we really look at the center of it, our teacher, like everything kind of revolves around our teachers because like we talk a lot about our students, right? We want our students to be healthy. We want our students to have good mental health. We want the academic performance to be good. Um, but that doesn't really come without supporting our teachers. Um, and I just think like. Um, sorry, I'm kind of losing my train of thought a little bit, but just making sure they're supported because. Um, as much as I I don't have respect for a lot of um, the school board in these meetings, um. Some teachers, like every time, like a new schoolboarding, a schoolwork meeting is like announced, a lot of teachers do have a level of like. Stress and anxiety that I can see because they're like, oh, I've put in a lot of work to um, planning and. Making sure everything's ready for this April fifth date. What if they they change it back? And I know you've talked about, you know. Weighing what's more important, but just I want to, all I wanted to really emphasize is making sure. Our incredible teachers at all of our, in the Wauatosa School District feel supported. Um, they feel relaxed and we're putting a lot of focus on their mental health and what's important to them. And uh, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Jamie, uh, do you know how? I fail to keep track of time. Um. Do you know how far we are in terms of?
Uh, we're about fifteen minutes through. Eighteen minutes.
Sounds good.
We're eighteen minutes through.
Keep running.
Okay, should we? Should we carry on?
Yeah, please. Sorry.
Okay, uh, Shelley Cousins. You have the microphone.
Um, I I'm sorry, I I don't have anything to say. I was just listening. I didn't mean to raise my hand. I'm just listening.
Okay.
Perfect Zoom meeting.
Um. Let's see, Katie. We have somebody called Katie. You have the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Uh, Katie Castleton, I am a STEM teacher at Longfellow Middle School. Um, the student who just spoke, thank you so much. I really appreciate you talking about like the teacher mental health. Um, because I think that is something that is on a lot of our concern. I know. Um, myself and my teammates, we've planned um, our lessons through April fifth to be appropriate. So now that kind of anxiety is peaking with um, redoing our lessons. Um. There's been talk about two workdays to prepare. But I guess I I've only heard of that that Monday, March first, so I'm unsure of where that second. Workday is is coming from for us to kind of. Um, redo our lessons and configure classrooms. Um, two other things with the March second date in specific is. Um, secondary does have parent-teacher conferences that week, so I don't know if that's something that. Was taken into consideration as well as that being um, just a few days before the end of the trimester. So. Students will be coming back full-time and then a couple days later, their trimester classes will be changing. So that's it. I just wanted to bring up those few points with that March second date specifically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Is Nellie Garrick. You have the microphone. Nellie Garrick, please state your name and address. Nellie Garrick. Okay, moving on. Chloe Anderson, you have the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Chloe Anderson. I am a senior at Wauatosa East High School and I live at six-one-seven-four Washington Circle. Um, okay, so I appreciate the hybrid model. I appreciate how safe it is. I have been monitoring COVID cases. All throughout the school year and I am very glad that cases are as low as they are. Um, however, I feel extremely uneasy about the prospect of. Going to five days a week in person with the new COVID variants, um, and how those variants may be more contagious than the current variant. Um, with the idea of three feet of space at lunch, that also is something that I find extremely concerning. And that one of the solutions to this was um, Mr. Erdl mentioned um, spaces at lunch. Uh, where kids who are uncomfortable with the with the lack of distance at lunch can go. Um, I was not aware that my school had any spaces like that. And so if those spaces do exist. Then I think that there should be a greater effort to um, make students aware that. There are other spaces beyond the Learning Center. The Learning Center and the small gym where they can eat lunch and certain teachers' classrooms. So um, if we're going to have twice as many students in the same building with only three feet of space. Um, as a student, I would be scared to deal with that scenario. Um, I would feel so much safer if. So if we were going back in April, then it would be warm enough for people to, for people to just be outside. So that is why I would feel much safer and much more confident in an April fifth scenario of going back to school five days a week then. My classmates have told me stories of their parents' friends who have died of COVID and I myself had COVID earlier in the school year in September. Um, so that is why I think that we should postpone the danger until April fifth. Um, just so that we can maintain safety and maintain the trust for community members. Because in winter, it's really not easy to maintain social distance when it's too cold to go outside. It's too cold for anyone to eat lunch outside. Um, in in April. It will be warm enough for people to eat lunch outside and have and maintain six feet of social distance during lunch. And during lunch, distance is really the only thing that protects anyone. You can't, you don't really wear a mask when you're eating food. Um, and you're talking, that's releasing germs. Distance is the thing that makes me feel safest during lunch. Safety and the trust of our community members to me are far more important than me than getting ten or eleven extra days of school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Uh. Kim. Lo, you have the microphone.
Hi, this is Kim Lau, twenty-three twenty-eight North Seventy-third. Um, I have two kids that are in Longfellow Middle School and two um. Others that are in Tosa East and they fall on two different sides of the spectrum. Um, my middle schoolers, um, one is doing okay, the other one is not. It's been a real struggle for her to be engaged, so. Um, whereas the other side, my other students have. I would say. Are surviving and doing well. I wouldn't say they're thriving because they certainly are missing out on being. And having all the opportunities, um, and I feel for them. Um. So I do support going back to school sooner rather than later. But I do feel that maybe March second is a teensy bit aggressive with. Alleviating the anxiety and fears that especially my older. Uh, students or girls have expressed to me and um, I think we've heard that. From others that have now expressed during this call. Um, so I'm just curious if maybe March second. Doesn't alleviate anxiety, so allow communications and support and students to. Speak with their teachers and speak with those individuals and learn more about those spaces that they can go to feel more safe. And separated as they adjust to this idea. Um, so curious if it could be considered March eighth, just to allow for those communications. And um, anxieties to be addressed and talked about and live, allow teachers. The opportunity to also. Wrap their head and adjust their school schedules and their lesson plans that they work so diligently on. Um, but I do want to see. My kids in school as soon as possible, um, and before April fifth. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. We've uh, completed our thirty minutes.
Thank you, Jamie. Um, I'm going to come back to the school board. Uh, any comments or anything else, any questions that you have? Um. Mr. Meyer, I'm looking at you because you're randomly in the spot. I'm looking at on my screen, so I'm going to start with you if that's okay. And you're on mute, Mr. Meyer.
Sarah, am I back?
Yes, sir.
Um. I feel I owe you a um, a statement of the reason for my vote. I. My vote is going to turn on the vaccination question for staff that um, my my preference is to. Um, give staff the month of March to. Have a chance for a vaccination. Um, prior to beginning in April. So I intend to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Meefel, any questions or comments?
No further questions. Thank you.
Okay.
For comment.
Mr. Phillips?
Sure, a couple of things. Um, you know, I spend my days in organizational change management and I know that. You know, when we, when our expectations misalign with the ability of the organization to change, right, there's. We're going to lose quality and we're going to lose. Uh, there's some unnecessary consequences that have happened in terms of disengagement of staff and. I was looking for, you know, like Mrs. Lau was just talking about, are there ways in which we could create additional. Capacity or take something off of the of our team's plate, um, so that they can. You know, shift and rearrange to go from, you know, having, you know, several weeks of to prepare down to. You know, till a week or a little bit more than a week is a lot. And one thing that came to mind and I and I maybe it's just from a. A place of um, you know, just thinking about ideas is. Um, one thing that that that's happening right now, there's a lot of colleague subs. And that creates additional close exposures for for our teachers and it feels like if we have the subs under control, could we? Like push pause on that till spring break, just to, you know, take that off their plate, you know, or, you know, deprioritize that. Give them some additional capacity. Um, I know it's a volunteer thing, but if it's not anything that we need to do right now, I think it would give. Um, just a, just a bit of breath to, you know, condense that change into just a more compact. Way. Is that something we can do? Yeah, I mean, we shouldn't be using necessarily colleague subs if we have, if we have um. Full-time subs, but I'm sure. I'll look into it and if we can accomplish it, we'll do that.
Okay.
I don't see a problem. I know there's like a hundred and forty, you know, they have four to a hundred and forty close contacts and then when their colleagues subbing, it just really, you know, adds to that. Um, that health aspect and creating capacity, anything we could do, I think, to create capacity. On behalf, you know, of our teachers in this compressed. Um, ability to change is going to, you know, quality, I mean, quantity is one thing, right? Those days are one thing, but when we compress it, we're going to lose quality, right? Because there's less than adequate time to prepare. Especially when we all agreed and came in the middle and said, you know, April's a good time. So. Just wants to look for ways to maybe deprioritize some things that are that are sucking up time. Um, I know that, you know, teachers feel like, I mean, I feel like our team feels like they've been part of the problem instead of part of the solution. I know they feel that we involve the furniture before we involve them. And I feel like, you know, that we could have been, looking back, we could have been more proactive, you know, with our professionals and. You know, engage them earlier and and really done a better job. And so, you know, some of those common themes. Are are some things that give me concern. You know, another piece of concern for me is. The way we use the CDC to support our case when it's when it's applied and then. Just discard the rest of it. And it's like, let's take this piece because it supports what we want to do and then. Let's disregard the rest of it because I don't, you know, we don't want to do it. And so that that feels a little weird to me. But um, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Rowland.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I guess first of all, start with a comment. Um, you know, I came in, obviously. If anybody watched the last meeting, knows that I came in with a. Uh, boatload of concern about the idea of, um, you know, starting in early February, given where we were on. Um. You know, our ability to space and just the. The plan itself didn't feel fully baked, wasn't there. Um, so I definitely came into that meeting feeling. Uh, tentative, as well as the caseload that was going on in the community, uh, was was too high. Um, and I guess this week, I mean, if you look at the caseload. In the community this week, like February fifteenth, there were no pos, new positive cases in all of Tosa. And yesterday, there was one new case of COVID in all of Tosa and in the past. Week, I believe it was twenty-two new positive cases in in the entire community. So. That's a huge change for the better. Um. To put us in a, to me, in a more comfortable position to even consider going into this. Um, so I think that's number one. That helps put me at a greater ease. I don't know if I'll ever feel good, but it puts me at more ease than I did. Um, the the questions I guess I've got, uh, especially like on the Whitman, um. You know, entrance, uh, coming into school that Ms., I think Lorrand had brought up. If there's a way for us to just make that happen, I think that would be another thing that, again, like, let's go. And find the small, medium and large wins that will mentally and physically make this better for people. So if we can just make that a staggered start at Whitman, can we just do that? Um, that's number one. Um. Concurrent learning, I think, right? You heard from the the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, Dr. Erdl, that. Concurrent learning, I think, right, you heard from the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, Dr. Erdl, that that has been a challenge. That will continue to be a challenge for the Tosa Connected students who are doing that on a regular basis. So I would love to hear more about how are we going to somehow regiment more like individual time with those students, knowing that it might be even more difficult for the teachers to dedicate attention to those students? So how do we, how do we make that a priority alongside these other priorities we're doing? And I know the teachers, you know, an email had brought up things about ACT prep. ACT is happening, I believe, on the eighth or the ninth of March, and then parent teacher conferences. Somebody can just briefly speak to how we're planning for that, either, you know, in concept, or if we have actual plans on that, can we just make those things known for people? So again, we can just build as much trust as possible with the community.
In in terms of the the concern relative to parent teacher conferences, we have begun to have conversations with the high school principals and the middle school principals about potentially moving that second date. And I believe we are, we're coming to some consensus around moving that one more week out, March 9th. We're waiting to make that decision until the vote tonight, but that definitely has been a conversation. In terms of the ACT, I don't know if you, Mr. Hughes might wanna speak to some of the plans that we have been discussing and putting in place and how that's going to be looking differently this year. Sorry to put you on the spot again, Mr. Hughes, but I know you've been working intimately with with that schedule.
Sure, one of the, one of the challenges has been the possible return prior to the ACT. The ACT is being scheduled in Windows this year, so it's a longer time where we can give that test from March 9th through 18th. But it's still ACT, so there are still stipulations and regulations because that's what ACT does. We are looking, though, to test our students. The students without accommodations, larger groups in the gym, speaking for East again. ACT also has very strict spacing and facing regulations for that as well. It is on the Chromebook for the first time this year. So we are looking to coordinate time so that we can share things like tables with Tosa West, as well as then start to work with our students who have accommodations, which may test over a period of days. So this, a decision tonight will help us as well finalize our plans. We've been planning for a couple of different modalities and possibilities with ACT testing.
Take pressure off all the students. As somebody who works on a college campus, ACTs are not going to be highly used this year for entrance requirements. Makes you feel any better? Still do well on them. Scholarships really depend on them, but take a little pressure off. I'm gonna head to all of our student reps now and see if you have any any closing comments or questions. Mira, do you wanna begin?
I know. Yeah. Just thank you for everything. I think that one really good thing that came out of this was really deliberate organization and thoroughly vetting everything. And I feel like a lot of the, like, if any of us came in with the concern, the concern was met with a solution, and I think that was relieving. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Adam?
I just had one last comment. So I genuinely believe that this process is is moving too quickly. If an extra school board meeting needs to be scheduled in order to give teachers enough time to prepare, I I think that indicates that this, we're moving too quickly. I genuinely feel concerned for the amount of prep time that teachers have had. And I also feel that students knew about the April 5th date, and now a change in that is very stressful, and there there just is not enough time from right now to March 2nd in order for us to process and prepare to go if, you know, if we go back five days a week. And I just really would like the board to think about the reality that students and teachers face and and yes, Dr. Erdl has said that three, well, he didn't promise three feet, obviously, because that's not, it's not possible, and I, in hallways during passing time, three feet will not happen. And and nowhere in on the CDC website does it say that less than six feet is appropriate when people are not wearing masks. So that, you know, goes back to lunchtime. And I just really would like the board to consider the reality of sending us back to school five days a week. So thank you.
And then I just had a clarifying question. Are the students that have quarantine, will they be doing, will they be following the concurrent model? So will they zoom into their classes, or or what is that looking like?
During quarantine, they will be zooming in concurrently.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Domon, did we come to you yet?
I don't have any other questions, Eric.
I, and I apologize, I had to run to the restroom, so I'm, I just, if we covered this, I apologize. But I wanna go back to Ms. Castleton's question about the clarification of the second workday. I was interpreting the second workday as being next Wednesday. Can we confirm that that day will be completely open for staff for revising lesson plans and that there will not be meetings?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
That's a little close.
That was a little close. So the two days, as I understand them, are next Wednesday and then the following Monday, and those are completely left to teachers to do what they feel they need to do in order to be adequately prepared for the second. Yes, okay. Yeah, that's just the one that I wanted to loop back to. And then somebody talked about the rolling start at Whitman.
We can look at that. I mean, I think I actually had a conversation because a concern was presented to Mr. Rohowski and myself, and we discussed it. So I think there's some flexibility in making that work.
And then the only other thing to Mr. Phillips' point, which I just so readily agree with, is teachers need to feel confident in terms of that they're they're able to be there and to be fully present and engaged for their students. So if there are things that can be taken off so that they can focus on the most important things, I feel like just even from my own experience as a teacher twenty years ago, things just keep always getting added, nothing is ever taken away. So if we can get really concrete on what can be taken away and the best people to tell us that, of teachers. So if we can just really be listening to them and then figure out how to add back in what we need to. So I'm glad to hear that we're considering moving that parent teacher conference date. That sounds stressful. That's it for me.
I'll make a few closing comments and share kind of why I'm gonna vote, be a yes vote on this. Mr. Phillips, I keep thinking about your comment at the beginning, change happens at the speed of trust. And like you, my dissertation is on how do you implement innovation in education and change in organizations and leadership? And this this year, Ms. Fraley talked about, we are seeing the things that we are good at and we are seeing the things that we are not good at. One thing that we have to be the best at is rebuilding the trust. Doing, I I'm I'm confident. I I believe that we have done everything we can to protect teachers, to protect kids, that we have been conservative in our approach, that we have ultimately, eight months before the CDC guidelines came out, followed them. And with the medical advisory panel, had that in place. And that if we vote tonight to go back, it's the day after we hit the level of the CDC that said it's okay to do so. Teachers still don't feel safe. And I hope that in retrospect, they will look at this and they will see that we were acting in a way that would both students centered and held them and their well-being at the center. This would have been a lot easier process for us to be able to see the future. One thing I know that I have to see in the future is for teachers to feel that they are listened to and heard, that we are utilizing and working with them as professionals, and that's up to me and the board and all of us in the district to feel that we're doing. This isn't a year where I think you could have a plan and stick to it. There's too many things that are changing. A district our size can't be as nimble as we need to be during a pandemic. I don't doubt in any way that everyone is doing their absolute best. But I also know that no matter what decision is made tonight, there will be some harm done. And I'm one hundred percent committed personally to make sure that I undo that harm and build back that trust. So things that I heard tonight, and some of our students, I think, were incredibly illuminating on the board. And one of my primary reasons for feeling like we are at a crisis tipping point is student well-being and mental health, that students are increasingly disengaged from the academic experience. They simply aren't showing up on concurrent learning days. And that's despite teachers doing, no doubt, everything that they can to engage students. It just simply is harder and sometimes impossible to do. And we had some students who called in tonight who talked about that they were challenged, where other students are doing really well. And so there's a huge variation. There's no single story of how we are navigating this individually or collectively. I think we absolutely have to make sure that we've got incredible communication at the school level going out so that teachers know exactly what's gonna happen, that families know and that when they
I really appreciated your comment.
That they, everyone knows what's gonna happen, when it's gonna happen, how it's gonna happen, and when they have questions, how to how to answer, how to answer effectively. The sub-issue, I think, is a good one. Wherever we can eliminate that as a pressure and a stressor for teachers. Ms. Fraley, I totally agree. Anything we can take off of that isn't essential. This isn't the year to do it. I, you've got my green light to jutison. I think I would like to see here as a board member, kind of feedback from day one. How did things go? What did we learn? The teachers know that there's gonna be things that we need to adjust after day one, after day two, after the first week. And I'd like to be kept in the loop, not because I want to micromanage or think I necessarily have great ideas, but anything I can do to help. If the board is needed, if I'm needed on to get folks into hallways or move things along that first week, reach out, I'd be happy to do that and take some time off of work. I'll check with my supervisor, Rick, so hopefully you'll give that to me, but oh, that's mine to work on. I think the Whitman point has been made. I had some teachers talk about making sure that teachers may wanna begin wearing double masks, that we've got adequate supply. That's an issue. And Mr. Rollins, I think your point on Tosa Connected, I am teaching a concurrent class right now at Marquette at the graduate level. And I will say, trying to teach concurrently, and I've taught online for ten years, but trying to teach to people in front of you and virtually, even with a second instructor in the classroom, is darn near impossible. So I think whatever we can do to support students, I'm hoping that when there's fewer students concurrent, it's actually easier to focus on that student or that couple of students as opposed to half the class. So I think whatever we can do to provide supports to teachers. I I think every teacher that emailed me, I tried to head everyone, I responded back. And oftentimes included my phone number. I know that you're gonna be mad. I know that you're scared. I know that you're frustrated. And I know that you're all professionals, so I know that you are going to do everything you can for students. Call me, vent, I will empathize, I will understand. I think it's fair to be mad at other people. Know that we are, we are going to do everything we can to do everything we can to keep you safe. And I know that that may sound hollow, but so whatever you need, phone number, three zero three, five four seven, two nine two four. It's on the website. Feel free to email or call, and I'd be happy to listen. Sean, I agree that there's been an incredible amount of people who've done a lot of really good work. The board charged Dr. Erdl in July to get us back as fast as possible to five days. That is a hard place to put a superintendent to balance these two things, and I know it has not been easy. I know we have not collectively done this perfectly, and we have to learn from that and continue to commit to the values that we have and move forward. Thank you to Caitlin and all of your nursing team who've done this, to the medical advisory panel who's been along for the ride, to the students who's pushed, who've pushed us to think about this in different, complex ways, to all the people who've emailed and called, to all the teachers, again, who have done so much and are going to do so much. And that I will do everything I can to keep each of you in the district, because I know that you are absolutely everything that we need for our children. And for my fellow board members who have been thoughtful, challenged each other, held each other in respect. When we have not agreed with perspectives, we've listened, we've pushed. I think a lot of people think that when the board comes in, we know the way it's gonna vote. And that we are not collectively talking about this outside of the meetings. I don't know how this is gonna go. And so what I know is that my colleagues in the board care a lot about the teachers, care a lot about the kids, and care a lot about the community, and that they are going to listen and do their very best to help guide us through this. With that, any final questions or comments from anyone on the board or any final comments, Dr. Erdl?
I'll just echo a lot of the comments that have been made, but thanking a lot of people. I mean, there's this, it hasn't been easy. It's been a, it's been a challenge, and there's a lot of people hurting, and there's a lot of people struggling, and there's a lot of people confused. But I appreciate everything the board has done and consideration you've given to this throughout. Thank you.
Wes Banger? I just wanted to see Ms. Bowers, who just emailed me about the Tosa Connected question. I just wanted to see, just for the TC families who are watching, if she just wanted to share what she shared with me. Because I think it's a good answer, so.
Yeah, thank you very much. I apologize, Mr. Rollins. I I lost track of that question when I was answering about conferences and Mr. Hughes was talking about ACT. But I just wanted to assure you and our families that we will connect with our Tosa Connected teachers. I will have a conversation with Mr. Carter next week. And if there are additional supports we need to put in place to ensure that the few concurrent learning opportunities we have right now for Tosa Connected students, that that we have those things ready to go for teachers and and helping them to get what they need to improve for kids. So thank you.
Yeah, make your comment, please.
Yes, Mr. Meyer.
I gotta be blunt here. It is not respectful to the to the other board members to be, nor to the community, to be sending comments by electronic communications when the public thinks we're discussing things you know, in the meeting. That's not something that I think is healthy for us.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments and questions, I will call the roll. Before I do that, Ms. Fraley, can you reread the motion?
Sure. It is recommended that students in grades six through twelve phase into learning start five days a week of in-person instruction beginning March 2nd, two thousand twenty-one, instead of the previously approved April 5th, two thousand twenty-one. March 1st would be a prep day for staff and no school for students in grades six through twelve. The superintendent, in consultation with the Medical Public Health Advisory Committee, is authorized to shift to exclusively virtual instruction because of worsening metrics in Wauwatoosa. Approval of the school board is not required for shift to virtual instruction and ISO move.
Sharon has previously seconded this, and I will call the roll. Mr. Domon?
No.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ms. Muftal?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Dr. Joseph Banger is a yes. That passes four to three. That passes four to three. It is 7:51. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Sorry, I'm taking my notes, so. Mary's not mad at me. Mr. Domon?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Mufeld?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah.
Dr. Jessup Banger is a yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.